Is now 7:13. I will call this meeting of the Bridgewater Town Council to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
This town council meeting is being streamed live via YouTube. Please go to the Town of Bridgewater Facebook page for the link. For tonight, I do have some condolences from our veterans agent. Please join me in remembering the following veterans. Robert M. Cummings, U.S. Air Force, passed away on October 10th. Jeremiah Russell, U.S. Army, passed away on October 11th. David M. Lentini, U.S. Marines, served in the Vietnam era, passed away on November 6th. Louis E. Perry, U.S. Army, Korean era, passed away on, sorry, passed away on November 8th. Leonard P. Yanush, U.S. Air Force, Korean era, passed away on November 15th. Please join me in a moment of silence recognizing these veterans and all Bridgewater veterans and their families. Thank you. Okay, we will start off with Agenda Item A, approval of minutes from previous meetings. Do I have a motion for approval and a second for November 4th meeting minutes?
Could I ask for one correction on them before we approve them?
Yeah, can we have a motion for approval and then a second and then we'll have discussion.
Okay, all right.
Second.
Sure.
Oh, now, now? Okay, so on page seven, it says that Mr. Linder, Linder made a thing. I'd like to just have it say Lindy. And on page 10, there's a D missing from Kennedy and it's just listed as Counselor Kenny. So I thought maybe we could just correct those since these are forever minutes.
Sure. Do you want to make a motion to amend?
Please, should I repeat it all?
Just for the record that Deb has it.
To move to change Linder on page seven to Lindy and to change Kenny on page 10 to Kennedy.
I'll second it.
Second. Any discussion on the amendments? No? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Any further discussion on the minutes as they are amended? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, motion carries. Item B, announcements from the President. I do not have any announcements other than we had a great tri-town veterans parade last week. It was great to march with a number of you and to have the privilege of giving a speech. It was a great event. So thank you to all the Bridewaters for putting that on and thank you to our veterans. Yeah, could we have a motion for approval and then a second, then we'll have discussion?
Okay, alright.
Second. Sure.
Oh, now, now, okay. So on page seven, it says that Mr. Linder, Linder made a thing, I'd like to just have it say Lindy, and on page 10, there's a D missing from Kennedy, and it's just listed as Counselor Kenny. So I thought maybe we could just correct those since these are forever minutes.
Sure, do you want to make a motion to amend?
Please, should I repeat it all?
Just for the record that Deb has it.
To move, to change Linder on page seven to Lindy, and to change Kenny on page 10 to Kennedy.
I'll second it.
Second, any discussion on the amendments? Nope, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Any further discussion on the minutes as they are amended? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, motion carries. Item B, announcements from the President. I do not have any announcements other than we had a great tri-town Veterans Parade last week. It was great to march with a number of you and to have the privilege of giving a speech. It was a great event, so thank you to all the Bridewaters for putting that on, and thank you to our Veterans Agent for putting that together. We do not have any proclamations. We will now move on to Citizens Open Forum. Due to Massachusetts Open Meeting Law requirements, discussions will not take place during public comment periods if appropriate responses to questions and concerns will be given by the Town Manager at a future Town Council meeting. Anyone may comment at this time for up to three minutes. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is David Moore, 54 Flag Street, and while we're on the subject of veterans, I would like to say that the Veterans Banner Program, we just got through taking down, I don't have an exact count, but we're over 280 veterans, ranging from World War I right up to presently serving. Our program got started eight years ago, and unfortunately, some of my members have aged out of the program. I've lost a couple, a couple of my vets have passed away, and most of the rest of us shouldn't be up on ladders. So, this year, I've had a tremendous amount of help from the Fire for Effect Foundation. Al Lacerda stepped forward with his folks, he did a great job publicizing our takedown event. We had some people start following Veterans Day on the 12th, and they got a few down, but I had a tremendous outpouring on Saturday, and we had all the banners down, well, I can't say all, because we still got a few stragglers, there's four or five still up there, they pop up once in a while. But we've got most of them down, but it was all to the efforts of Al Lacerda and his people have been a tremendous help in this program. So, and I would like to say thank you for the town for hosting this program. We're a leader in the area, if you've been around, other towns have adopted it, but nobody comes close to what we do in Bridgewater. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moore, for everything that you do with that program.
Carlton Hunt, 80 Austin Street, Vice Chair of the CPC. The folks that aren't here, but are in the audience, may have had a little bit of a challenge coming into the building because we're finalizing the strengthening of the walls to hang the Parthenon frieze that we had restored. The hanging event is supposed to be tomorrow, so we're trying to get everything done in place. The other thing I very much would encourage you is the Order FY26033, the Transfer Order for the Engineering for the Multifunctional Fields. I highly encourage you to pass that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, guys doing? Brad McKinnon, 86 Spring Street, just here to talk about a few things. The first thing is the Sewer and Water Committee. I did apply for that because when I was on the council, I dealt with two different Town Managers who basically just brushed all the talks to the side. So I did feel the need to just see what was going on there. I applied because it's a volunteer position, I got the email saying it's no longer active, and I just really was trying to see what's going on there. I mean, plenty of towns around here have this. I see benefits, I see pros and cons from it, but I see more cons, I mean pros. I mean, I resigned and withdrew my papers two months before my election. I didn't want to do this. I'm a hoisting engineer, not a rail engineer. People call me dirt dummies. It's not really my thing, but like I said, this is just me trying to open the door for conversation. I mean, it's, I do think it's something the town should have, and I mean, accountability's huge. I wasn't the best counselor when I was here, but I did get elected when I was 28 years old, and plenty of past counselors and even the constituents said the one thing you did best was accountability with your list and all that. I mean, this guy's lucky over here, I'm not there because the list would be pretty long. But I did give up that list when we got an interim Town Manager because they couldn't do as much, but there's, I mean, there's a tire problem, we have the 5,000 tires in the woods on Water Street, we have Stiles and Hart, which, I mean, the bottom parking lot is just abandoned. I know there's other issues that we don't need to talk about, but what's up with the grant funding there? When does that end? Summer Street, I mean, I came in here and I called out the fact that there was a construction company there for three weeks doing nothing, and then two days later they disappeared and no work has happened there. We've talked about Flag Street, a few people have brought that up without me even asking them to, and we were told that all the dirt was pulled out of there when, if you drive by, you can clearly see that nothing's been touched for, since they've shut it down. I mean, we definitely need a little bit more questions when it comes to the Town Manager updates, because when I was on the council, I felt that was the most important part of being on the council was holding the Town Manager accountable, even if I said stuff I wasn't or stuff that I shouldn't have, it's still, you gotta hold people accountable, and I'm not saying him, I'm saying everyone in this town when it comes to this building. So, like I said, I didn't really want to, I don't want to be on the Sewer and Water Commission, but I applied to start that, but the Board of Health also needs people, so if you want to move my application over there, I'll gladly fill that spot to help out, but just don't look at my resume too much, I made it on my notes on my iPhone, so it was kind of just trying to get things going. You guys have a great day.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to come up and speak?
Okay.
Seeing none, we will now move on to appointments. So for this agenda, oh, God.
I just wanted to ask if we could move the B and C out of order? Do those before we do the School Committee? They'll probably be quick.
Sure, yeah, we could.
Could I make that in the form of a motion?
Of course.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. So, that being said, we will move on to our other appointments for Conan Trust. This is a reappointment for Mr. Michael Levy. Do I have a motion for approval and a second for discussion?
So moves.
A motion and a second?
Second.
Any, any discussion on this appointment for Mr. Levy?
Mr. Levy's been on that committee for years and years, so if he's willing to continue to serve, probably does us well.
Thank you, yeah, and this is for 2025 to 2030. And is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. This is for other Conan Trust appointments. Let's begin with Ruth LeBont. This is a term from 2025 to 2028. Do I have a motion for approval and second for discussion?
So moves.
Second. We have a motion and a second, and is there any discussion on this appointment? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And then lastly, we have Mr. Scott Heil. This is again for the Conan Trust appointments. This is for a 2025 through 2029 term. Do I have a motion for approval and second for discussion?
Seconded.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
And any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you for that, Mr. Lindy, that was a good idea. Okay, so that being said, we will move on back to Item A under Appointments. I'll invite our members of the School Committee to join us for this item. As required by our district agreement, we have Ms. Andy Hoyt-Thomas joining us, Mr. Michael Loesch and Mr. Tim Fitzgivens joining us for this appointment. I will preside over the appointment process, but all of us will be participating in the deliberations and the vote. So, per the notice that went out, we'll begin with any comments or support from the public on these appointments, so if anybody would like to come up and speak now, we'll go ahead and do that. I know that we already had citizen comments, but if anybody would like to speak to these appointments in particular, we'll give you the opportunity to do that now. Okay?
Just a question. Are all the candidates present in the room?
Are they in here, are they in the waiting room?
They should be in here. I don't know them, so I don't know.
Okay. So, at this time, we'll conduct the interviews, and we did discuss the Town Council Clerk to move those who are not being interviewed into a waiting room. We'll conduct one interview at a time, so we will begin in the order of which folks applied. We'll begin with Jane Myrick first, and so if the other three applicants could wait in the waiting room, please.
So, just a point of information, there are four candidates, and we only have three here.
Right, three left.
Matthew's here? Matthew is left.
Need to stop.
So it's Matthew, Dana, and Amy. Amy's out there.
Yeah, they, three of them.
I think Dana's here. Dana's not here.
Who was that tall man? Who was that tall guy?
Okay, well, we could continue while they're sorting that out. So, we do have four applicants, we'll see if Dana is here. Each applicant will come forward as Ms. Myrick is here in front of us. We did ask those participating in the vote to submit questions. I do have those questions aggregated here in front of me, so thank you all for submitting those questions. I did, when possible, keep those questions verbatim. If some of them were redundant, I kind of consolidated, so I just, just a point of information for those participating here. So, Ms. Myrick, we'll just begin with a series of questions, and then we'll kind of go from there. So, number one, on the topic of commitment, continuity, and future service, so this appointment runs until April. How do you view your commitment to public service, and do you plan to continue on your service beyond this appointment by running potentially in the April election?
Thank you so much for the question. Hi, everyone, it's a pleasure to be here, thank you so much. So, yes, I, first off, I'd like to say I'm a proud double-bear alumni of Bridgewater State, and with both in charge of my Bachelor's of Earth Science and Secondary Education, along with my Master's Degree of Higher Education Administration. I feel as though that I am civically motivated now to come into my own and really fulfill what Bridgewater motto is, is not to be unministered but to minister, which means not to be served but to serve. That's ultimately what I wish to do. I also have started to take root in this beautiful community of Bridgewater, as I've been here since about 2016. So I'm also a newly member on the Diversity, Equity, Inclusion, and Belonging Committee, as well as the Cultural Committee here at Bridgewater as well. So, long story short, I think the saying of local impact, national, local action, national impact is something that I wish to do. I just wish to serve amongst my constituents from as far as I can be, as far as I can reach.
Thank you. The next question is on prioritizing limited resources. In a world of limited resources, which, what principles guide your approach to prioritizing spending and determining what should come first and what may need to wait?
First and foremost is about securing the students' education, and ensuring that we are maximizing their opportunities and potential at the fullest capacity that we can. Given that with the circumstances and limited resources that we have on this very finite planet, such resources, I would say to not only curriculum, but to equipment, but I would also say professional development to really cultivate a nurturing and fostering sense of climate and culture within the school community. Other things that would need to be weighted off as a capital special project would probably be, I would say, I don't want to say quote-unquote fancy, but I would say, you know, if we have an extra little splurge money and want to do something a little bit freely for the school because we can, but I would try to dictate those spending funds to actual needs instead of wants.
Makes sense, thank you. Next one, vision for improvement beyond funding. Putting aside the obvious need for additional funding that our schools are very familiar with, what specific improvements, whether they be administrative or educational, do you believe are needed across the district, and what strategies would you use to help implement them?
I think a valuable skill that I wish to see as it changes, I become more as an adult, as I'm young adult, I wish to see a comeback of vocational, and occupational. I, although I did not go to a vocational school myself, my student teaching practicum, although remote, was at Southeastern Vocational School, and I just loved how it infused both trade and education, so then no matter what, our students can walk away contributing to society in whatever capacity that they so choose. So I feel as though that if we could collaborate with other schools, maybe do research, try to instill more skills, hard skills into our schools, and therefore maybe we could do fundraisings, we could do some campaigns, marathons, you name it. The potential could go more if we could only explore what our students and what our capacities are, if we just explore that with vocationals.
Thank you, I've got two left. Next one is on budget understanding and mandates. How would you approach overseeing the School Committee budget, including mandated spending, and are you open to reviewing those mandates to ensure funds are being used as effectively as possible?
Thank you for the question. I'll be first and foremost that I will be a rookie, so I will be learning as I go, but, I mean, you have to start somewhere, so might as well start, you know. So after the crash course, but authentically learning, of course, as dutifully, it is a team effort, it takes a village, so ultimately what I wish to say is I'm more democratic, I like to hear all voices and come to a shared agreement. May I ask a reminder of the second question, forgive me?
The second part of the question was, are you opening to, are you rather open to reviewing those mandates, for example, your special education mandates, transportation mandates and so forth?
Absolutely.
To ensure funds are being used as effectively as possible?
Absolutely, I would be very much fascinated with those mandates. Reading over large paperwork has now become a special interest of mine. I am also a late-diagnosed autistic neurodivergent individual with ADHD, so if brought to that occasion to review such mandates, that would be a very special passion of mine, especially.
Thank you. Last question, on collaboration and governance approach. School committees work best when members collaborate, even when they disagree. How would you describe your approach to teamwork, communication, and navigating different viewpoints?
That is something that I flourish on. I love engagement, I love collaboration, but I also really enjoy hearing other perspectives and not just hearing the same thing. I ultimately believe that diversity is our strength, and therefore, you know, the collaboration
Good, good. Mr. Matt Salinas?
Yes, Salinas.
Salinas? Okay, great. If you could just give a very, very brief intro, because we do have five questions for you, and then we'll go ahead and get started.
So my name is Matt Salinas. I am a Bridgewater resident for about 10 years. I've been a lifelong educator in some way, shape, or form, working with youth in Boston to now in New Bedford. And, you know, public education has always been one of the most important things in my life. I am a product of public schools. When my wife and I were looking for a town to raise our family, and that was an important part, because public education should be equal and should be, lay a solid foundation for all of our students. And, you know, wanting to help provide that in a more broad manner is something that is passionate for me. Looking at different policy, looking at different ways to work on collaborations and work with different partners in the community, whether it's the Town Council, whether it's Bridgewater State, whether it's other outside entities, is something that I am really passionate about. One thing I would say in my professional career I have built is a lot of networks and collaborations. And so that is really important for me as a person, as a parent, is to have strong networks and collaborations to really help make our school system what it can be. You know, I will always say I have found amazing teachers in Bridgewater and administrators, and will always cheerlead them, and I hope that we can support them the best we can with the current situation that we've been in the past couple of years.
Thank you. So we do have five questions. So the first question is about commitment continuity in the April election. This appointment runs until April. How do you view your commitment to public service? And do you plan to potentially run for this seat in the April election?
So I think my commitment to public service has been lifelong, as I said when I gave my introduction. But I have worked on different committees. You know, when I was in Boston, I worked and, you know, different youth-serving agencies and really working on policy and programs and bringing funding to the community that I worked at. So that is something I've been committed to my entire career. Where I work now in New Bedford, I like to bring in different nonprofits and other agencies for that. So that's kind of a testament to my commitment in terms of April on. I think that if I am appointed now, it would be something that I would be fully invested in for the April election, because I think we need the structure, we need the long-term support and commitment.
Thank you. Second question is on prioritizing limited resources. In a world of limited resources, what principles guide your approach to prioritizing spending and determining what should come first and what may need to wait?
So I think, that's a great question. So I think for that, it would be really listening to the constituents, right? And I think there's a lot of constituents when you're on a school committee. So, you know, you have students, you have the public school system, you also have the town. So I think really listening to everyone in terms of what the highest needs are and really coming together as a committee to have the best educated decision for what we need to do. I think it is really hard right now, looking at, also too, I think in the school committee, for the schools, is really looking at making sure that we are abiding to all of the federal regulations, whether it's for special ed, whether it's for McKinney Ventum and things like that, that we really make sure we are keeping those high-need areas the priority, right? So I think when we look at that priority, it's making sure that that happens. And then, you know, yes, it is hard as a parent who has a three-sport athlete to be paying $600, but I will say this, everyone is doing it, right? Because the families also have that sense of, hey, we're going to make this a really good thing for our students and athletics and help young people. And I think the town has come together and done a really amazing job this past fall. So I think that's how I would look at that. We have to have the federal regulations, we have to have the DESI regulations, and then look at where those things might trickle down to things that can also be helped by outside funders and by other collaborations.
Thank you. Next question is regarding vision for improvement beyond funding. Putting aside the obvious need for additional funding, what specific improvements, whether they be administrative or educational, do you believe are needed across the district? And what strategies would you use to help implement them?
I think from what I've seen, having, think, clear vision and structure with all grade levels, so elementary, intermediate, middle school, and high school, being a parent that has someone in three of those schools, we get, there's different communication, there's different programs that aren't really streamlined. I think really looking at streamlining some things, having, you know, the superintendent talk with the principals and really working on streamlining some of those would be important in terms of the school component. I also think that looking, prioritize, looking at more cyber things, looking at more technology, really helping to bring partnerships that are focused on the tech industry and things like that. I also think another huge part is looking at some more hands-on learning. I think, you know, looking at more, I don't want to say voc, because I know we do have a voc, but looking at more programs that might help young people say, hey, you know what? I don't have to go to school for four years. I can, you know, be an electrician and do very well. I can be a carpenter and have a good living and do something that I'm passionate with my hands and trying to do some more of that, you know, hands-on learning in the school district as well would be important.
Thank you. Fourth question, budget understanding and mandates, to which you already spoke to a little bit about. How would you approach overseeing the school committee budget, including mandated spending? And are you open to reviewing those mandates to ensure funds are being used as effectively as possible?
So 100% look, open to reviewing them, looking at learning more and really trying to use, you know, my experience with my MPA and also some other public budgeting that I did throughout my career. I had a partnership with Boston Public Schools. That was a pretty significant contract that we really had to make sure that our budget was, you know, within the means that BPS gave us. And so really, looking at those mandates, looking at what the town has, and again, coming over that best solution for what we can do with the funds that we have.
Thank you. And last question, on collaboration and governance approach. School committees work best when members collaborate, even when they disagree. How would you describe your approach to teamwork, communication, and navigating different viewpoints?
I think I do that every day. You know, so I'm on the leaderships committee at my school and I, you know, we have people that have a lot of different viewpoints and we have to work together for the best interests of the students. I think that's the number one. I know that it was a very hard budget process this past spring and summer, and I think the school committee did the best they could with what they had, right? And so looking at that and saying, hey, it was hard choices that they had to make and knowing that was a collaborative effort. So I think working with that collaborative process and really listening. I think the number one thing for me, coming into this meeting today, was knowing that from now until April, it will be a lot of listening, it will be a lot of understanding, working with the school committee members to understand, hey, why did certain votes go this way? Why didn't money get taken out that way? In a much more just questioning, not like, you know, why didn't we do this threatening? But like, hey, guys, like, how can I help, help me understand why the budget went this way? Because I think we need to make it work for our constituents, and our number one constituent is the students in this town. So that's what I would do.
Great. That concludes our questions. Thank you very much. You're free to grab a seat and then we'll continue on.
Thank you very much.
Ms. Myrick, I did not give you an opportunity for an opening statement. You kind of introduced yourself in the beginning. Would you like to give a closing statement? I want to provide you the same opportunity that I'll give the other candidates. I don't want you to be slighted, so.
I appreciate it. Thank you. Although I do not have kids yet, ultimately, how to say it? I was redoing an opening statement. It's quite all right. Ultimately, what I want to say is educators are forever learners. I very much love Paul O'Fier, learning about at Bridgewater State, where you learn, you teach in the act of learning, you learn in the act of teaching. It's never one person that always knows the right answer. You have to work together. As I said in my commencement speech past May, you know, we're all just homo sapiens at the end of the day. And as Horace Mann said, you know, education is the cornerstone of democracy where all children of all ethnic, social backgrounds are taught and respected. So that's ultimately what I just wish to carry on, is just Horace Mann's and Paul O'Fier's mission. So, thank you kindly.
Thank you. Please introduce yourself in a brief opening statement and then we'll move into some questions.
Absolutely. Good evening, everyone. So I'm Dr. Amy Benner of 550 High Street in Bridgewater. I've lived here for the past 15 years, and I have one kiddo over at the Mitchell, a five-year-old in kindergarten, as well as a third grader who just started at the Williams Intermediate. And really, I have a few different motivations to serve that I'd like to share with you. First, just the investment in the community, not only as a resident and as a parent, but also as a career educator. I have over 20 years in the field of education and just recently earned my doctorate degree. And my work was focused on elevating student voice and designing student interventions. So I think that that's a big piece of this role is voice, having opportunities to hear the student voice, hear the educator voice, hear the citizen's voice in what we're doing as a community. Also, very focused on student-centered leadership to follow through on that. I have experience at multiple levels, which I think brings me credibility. I have been a classroom teacher, a building leader, and now a district-level administrator. And I think I will bring a unique expertise and, again, credibility in being able to see the educational system from the roles of many of our folks who are in the system. And also, I greatly believe in the idea of strategic governance. I think that those who sit in school committee and those who sit on, you know, kind of the other side of the aisle, so to speak, in our education system have a very important duty. And within that duty, I believe it's important to build trust, to maintain relationships, to make hard decisions based on fact, and with the understanding and sort of carrying the responsibility that acting within these roles affects the very real lives of families with diverse perspectives and priorities, one of which I am a part of. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. So we do have five questions.
Sure.
The first one is on the topic of commitment continuity and the upcoming April election. This appointment, as you know, runs until April. How do you view your commitment to public service? And do you plan to run for the seat in the April election?
Yes, absolutely, I do. I would like to sort of bring, take on this bite-sized chunk at this time, you know, having just come out of a doctoral program and so on and so forth. You know, I haven't had the flexibility to take on a role like this. So I think this piece brings, gives me the opportunity to get in and establish some of the relationships I haven't been able to establish while I've been, you know, immersed in my educational and professional career. But then to take that, take those building blocks and the renewed energy that I hope that I would bring to the position and carry that through. So I, in short, I am in here for the long haul.
Great. Second question, prioritizing limited resources. In a world of limited resources, what principles guide your approach to prioritizing spending and determining what should come first and what may need to wait?
So I'm a big believer in strategic planning. So I think that as, again, the folks in, you know, the elected positions such as this, as well as our educational leaders and folks that are working in our school system, I think that our priorities should be guided by strategic planning, and that also comes from data. Taking a look at where are our biggest areas of strength, where are our areas of opportunity, and developing a plan together as to what our focus areas are. And then as we make financial decisions, repeatedly turning our attention back to that strategic plan, which should be underpinned by building improvement plans, educator eval, all the systems and structures that kind of feed up into a well-organized school that has looked at, you know, what outcomes are most important to it, and then to always be making our decisions based off of that. With that said, as much as I believe in the strategic plan and having a document that's structured and thoughtful and reflective, there's also life and reality. And sometimes there's compelling needs or changes or circumstances that need to be thought of, and so I think it's a balance of both of those things.
Great. Thank you. Next question, vision for improvement beyond funding. Putting aside the obvious need for additional funding for our schools, what specific improvements, whether they be administrative or educational, do you believe are needed across the district? And what strategies would you use to help implement them?
So it's not unlike many of the changes that are needed across our whole state education system. I really believe, I'm a bit of a radical thinker. I don't believe in continuing to do the same things that have been done just because they have been done. I really think we need to be looking at our educational system and embedding many of the skills that our students will need to be prepared for life beyond schooling, regardless of whatever path they chose. So I think that we need to be looking at partnerships within the community, partnership with local workforce boards, ways to build up our students' educational experiences so that they have options. And certainly, we abide by our DESI curriculum standards and all of the things that, you know, DESI has judiciously handed down to us to help guide our education. But I think we also need to be looking at our changing world and ways that we can reach out for help from our community and our region in order to build up the student experience. So that would be a real priority for me, making sure that students have embedded experiences to gain those kinds of skills that are going to take them beyond just potentially a college application or their next job, but beyond.
Thank you. Next question, budget understanding and mandates. How would you approach overseeing the school committee budget, including some of the mandated spending that you mentioned? And are you open to reviewing those mandates to ensure funds are being used as effectively as possible?
100%. So that's a big part of my role and has been my role in my professional experiences, being a fiscal steward and really understanding the complexities of school finance. That's my wheelhouse, so to speak. For fun, I was on the, you know, the local contribution hearing regarding the chapter, the chapter 74 formula this evening. I also, my expertise is not just in education, but is in special education, which is one of the biggest budget drivers in a school budget. So I know that there might be some other experience in that realm on the committee as well. But I think being able to bring that really intricate knowledge of all the forces, I also really believe in zero-based budgeting. You know, we need to strip it down and take a look at what are we building our budget with? And, you know, what are our priorities based on, like I said, harkening back to that strategic plan, harkening back to, you know, changes kind of in the school enrollment, the student population that might arise as we go, and being responsive to those pieces.
Thank you. Last question, collaboration and governance approach. School committees work best when members collaborate, even when they disagree?
Absolutely.
How would you describe your approach to teamwork, communication, and navigating differing viewpoints?
So I have a couple of different philosophies on that. First off, I believe clear is kind. I don't think we solve anything by, you know, holding our cards and not speaking what's on our mind and not bringing our perspective to the table. So you could always count on me to be very direct and communicative in terms of what I feel is the best, you know, steps forward. I also believe in consensus building, which is a big part of any team. Even if I'm in a position where my viewpoint, my decision, my piece of the puzzle hasn't been moved forward in terms of the committee's decision or, you know, the broader schools' decisions, I believe in consensus. So even if I'm not in a place where, again, my choice has been selected, it is a team approach. And so once a decision has been made via consensus, we move that forward and we support each other. And I think school committees and school systems really need to do a better job locking arms together for students. You know, there is a lot of divisiveness that has the potential to breed and grow. And there's no place for that. We're here for kids, and I don't abide by that. So that's not something that you would expect from me.
Great. Great. Well, that concludes all of the questions. Thank you very much.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Debbie, am I correct in saying that we only have the three? Okay. So in keeping in accordance with how this was posted, we do have a note here that we're going to jointly deliberate amongst ourselves. There's 12 of us here, so I'll recognize speakers. And we deliberate here and then we'll take nominations from the floor shortly thereafter. And I'm sure we'll continue to deliberate. So I'd love to give the opportunity to our members of the school committee if they'd like the floor first, if they have any comments on our applicants. And we could deliberate amongst ourselves before taking nominations.
Thank you and thank you for the opportunity. And thanks to all three candidates for coming up here and presenting. This is a difficult, certainly, forum to be in front of and be fired questions at that you weren't prepared for. So thank you all for being up there and giving us your time. In listening to all three candidates, really, I do appreciate their perspectives and their knowledge and their background experience. I think one thing that I just want to really want to point out, past involvement and experience, I think, counts for a lot. I know, one, we saw Mr. Salinas at past meetings throughout this school year and budget process and being a public comment, being aware and a part of the district. I also want to say I definitely appreciated his views of the influence of school committee, where, you know, relegated to policy and finance and overseeing those two portions of the district. I also want to say just, you know, we also definitely appreciate educators being a part of this. You know, these are the people who do the work on the ground on a day-to-day. So thank you to him, Ms. Benner. But I also would say, you know, given he's also, that Matt has three kids in the community who are attending our schools, he's a long-term member of the district, has had views at all different levels and experiences. And given his background, I would definitely put forth my support for him.
Thank you. Any other members like to make any comments at this time? No? Any members of the council like to offer any comments?
Just want to thank all three candidates for putting their name out there. It takes courage to do that. You want to do more. You're already in education, so it's, you know, I commend all three of you for wanting to step up to the plate.
Thank you. Any general comments from our counselors?
Yeah, I'll just echo the same sentiments. I want to thank all three of the candidates for coming up tonight. You all bring different backgrounds and different experiences that could, you know, could all work for the position. So hopefully, our discussion and deliberation tonight will put the best candidate forward. But again, I want to thank all of you guys for coming out tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Any general comments from the rest of the council? Okay, seeing none, we'll now move into the appointment phase. And under our rules and Robert's Rules of Order, we'll take nominations from the floor. Our rules are vague, to say the least. So we are deferring to what is under Chapter, Section 46 of Robert's Rules. And so we'll take nominations one at a time and then we'll do a voice vote, or rather, a roll call vote, and then go to the next candidate if we don't have a majority. I did notice that Mr. Murphy's hand was up first, so I will defer to him. I'll open up nominations at this time.
Yeah, I'd like to make a nomination for Dr. Benner.
Second.
Second.
And we have a second. So at this time, we will now continue to entertain any other nominees that we will entertain if the motion fails. So do we have any other nominees?
I would like to nominate Matthew Salinas.
Okay.
Second.
And we have a second for Mr. Salinas. Will there, are there any other nominations on the floor? Okay, nominations are closed. So we'll now move forward. Dr. Benner was nominated first, so we do have a motion to appoint and we do have a second. So I'll now open up that for discussion. So any discussion on this appointment?
I think Sonya had her hand first.
Oh, yes.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, in my time of serving with you on the Budget Subcommittee for the School Committee during our override conversation, one of the biggest areas and needs and concerns in our town and in our district is special education. And I feel that it's the perfect time to involve someone that does this every single day on the school committee, where we're able to potentially get some new ideas on what might work in another district that might not be a regionalized district, but ultimately, they might be doing something that we could explore, that I would really like to have the opportunity to be able to navigate around. So I found her resume to be very impressive. We have our own doctorate individual amongst us that's trying to get his PhD. So ultimately, we understand those complexities, but he works very hard. And based on your resume, you work very hard as well. So those were my sentiments.
Great. Any further discussion?
So I'd like to echo some of the same comments. I think the resume is very impressive and it's good timing that the PhD is actually done. Two kids in the school system and a specialty on education and consensus building and everything else. I think we, this is a tough choice, to be honest with you. There are great candidates for this position, but I think Dr. Benner has the best.
Okay. Any further discussion from counselors or members of our school committee? Okay, seeing none, we will now move on to, we'll do a roll call vote. Ms. Ward, would you mind assisting us?
Yep. Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Mr. Loesch? Ms. Hoy Thomas? Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Ms. Hunt?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Loretty?
No.
Ms. McGrath?
No.
Ms. Strigels?
Yes.
Ms. Ellenberg?
No.
And Mr. Kennedy?
No.
One, two, three, four, five, six. What's the count? Six to six.
Six to six. So the motion fails. So we'll now move on to our next nominee, Mr. Matthew Salinas. We already had a motion and a second, so discussion on Mr. Salinas.
I was very impressed with Mr. Salinas's experience in mental health issues, which is certainly a very serious problem these days. And the fact that he worked with youth groups kind of outside the box. I think that creative spark is needed for our schools, and that's why I'm supporting him.
Thank you.
As Counselor Lindy equated to this experience, it was not easy. There, to me, there were two very clear right fits for our school committee at the moment, and Mr. Salinas was the other fit for me. I appreciate his ability to not only think outside the box, but have a plethora of experience throughout education. And bringing that clinical awareness to our school committee, I think, is also a niche that is worth exploration. So I would fully support him on the school committee.
Thank you. Any further comment?
Yeah, I like that he has a lifelong commitment with the youth in that he works with kids who have discipline problems, because we definitely have some in our school system. So I think it would be nice to have someone with the qualifications he has, that he's dealt with students all the time in different aspects of his career. So, I mean, it was a difficult, I had, if Amy had not been first, you know, I might have went with her, but I think I lean more to him because of his lifelong commitment to the kids.
Any further comments from counselors or our school committee members?
Yep, I just want to reiterate, you know, I do definitely appreciate everyone stepping up with this vacancy, but also just to point out that Matt has participated in past meetings and made himself present and involved in the district, which, you know, we have not seen from any of our other candidates today, which means he's actually seen how our meetings transpire. He's had opinions and voices heard throughout our process, and I think that speaks a lot.
Thank you. Anything further?
Yeah, I just wanted to note, we have two candidates that do have some budgetary experience in different capacities within school systems, so that, for me, was a priority. But I do appreciate his experience, not just with the youth, having children in the school in multi-levels, because there are different issues in different schools within our system. So having some knowledge of what may or may not be going on and some outside budget experience with an outside entity is a benefit, I believe.
Thank you. Any further comments? Okay, seeing none, Ms. Ward, may we go to a roll call vote, please?
Sure. Ms. Hoy Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Loesch?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
I'm going to pass for the moment.
Ms. Hunt?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Loretty?
Yes.
Ms. McGrath?
Yes.
Ms. Strigels?
Yes.
Ms. Ellenberg?
Yes.
And Mr. Kennedy?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes.
It's 12 in favor, zero opposed.
It is unanimous, the motion passes. Congratulations, Mr. Salinas. You are appointed. We, sometimes we'll swear people in after this, but we will do so tomorrow morning, I believe, with the council clerk. Please convene with Tina and then we'll get you sworn in tomorrow. Great, thank you. And, there's a meeting tomorrow?
I live at that high school.
Can I ask for...
To members of our school committee, thank you very much for coming and accommodating. We appreciate you being here.
Can I ask for a brief recess? Can I ask for a brief recess? I'd like to make a motion for a five-minute recess.
Second in.
Second. All those in favor of a brief recess?
Aye.
We'll take, come back in 10 minutes, 10 minutes.
Thank you, everyone. Time's now 8:18. I'll call this meeting back to order. Thank you again to all of our candidates for tonight. That was a tough decision, and thank you for stepping forward and serving our community. We'll now move into item F, hearings. We'll start with petition P 2026-003, petition for National Grid for pole and wire locations on Center Street. This is a continued public hearing. It was originally advertised in the October 21st, 2025 enterprise. I am continuing the public hearing at this time. It's now 8:19, and I'm going to ask our town manager and National Grid rep if we have any updates.
I think our, the National Grid rep is here and can provide a quick update.
How you guys doing? My name is Mohammed. I'm here on behalf of National Grid located at 100 East Ashland Street, Brockton. Just kinda, I know the concerns for that one. The person living at 6 Adler Street was concerned the pole would be going near their driveway. I just wanted to confirm that it is going on the intersection of Adler and Center Street on that corner, so it won't be anywhere near their driveway.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Justin, do you have any, any updates from the town on, on that? Or anything that our DPW director needs to speak to on Center Street?
Nope, we've, we've seen the plan. We all agree, we, it is where it was said. No concerns from our staff.
Okay, great. Would anyone in the audience like to come up and speak at this time? Okay, seeing none. Councillors, do you have any, any comments or questions of National Grid or members of the town staff? No? Yes, as, as long as everything seems tidied up on, on our end, I have, I have no further questions. So I will go ahead and close this public hearing. It is now 8:20. I'll ask for a motion for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? Okay, motion carries. B, we have petition P 2026-004, petition for National Grid for joint or identical pole locations, and this is for Winter Street. This is continued, a continued public hearing as advertised in the October 21st, 2025 enterprise. I'm continuing this public hearing at this time, which is 8:21, and I'll ask our town manager for any updates on this one.
We've collaborated with our DPW director on National Grid, but also the residents who had concern. I do want to suggest that we continue this hearing one more time, just to give the opportunity to share the plan and be pretty deliberate about what that plan exactly is, just to clarify any concerns. But I do expect that at the next meeting, we'll be prepared to move forward.
Great, thank you. Would anyone from the public like to come up at this time and speak? Okay. Any questions or comments from our councillors? Okay.
I did go down and speak with the residents that were here, and I could completely understand their confusion as a homeowner in that area. The pole's situation and the narrow Winter Street do create a little bit of a problem. So I appreciate the town manager taking the initiative there and trying to inform the citizens as to what that is and, and taking the time to extend this a little bit just to do that, so, thank you.
Cool. Yeah, thank you to our town staff, and thank you councillor Kennedy, as the district councillor over there, to go out there and investigate this and advocate for our, our residents. So I will close the public hearing at this time, which is 8:22. And do I have a motion to continue this hearing?
Second.
And a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes? Okay, we do not have any licensed transactions nor presentations. We'll now move on to our town manager's report, beginning with fire station update.
Good evening. You have our monthly report. If you happen to go by the fire station tonight, you'll see that the lettering for Fire, Bridgewater Fire Headquarters is up and illuminated. The numbers over the equipment bay are up and illuminated. We are very close. We had the dispatch council setup was delivered on Thursday and installed. That's in place. We have a major furniture delivery tomorrow. The striping has been done, the paving has been done, so we are on schedule. We're doing our punch list tomorrow with the architects. So our anticipation is, is that the chief, the deputy chief, and their executive assistant will probably move over in December with a full transition in January now, which is what we anticipated. We're still ahead of schedule, and things are going well.
Great.
Really well.
Comments or questions from councillors? Mr. Lindy.
Through you to Mr. Ruley, if the town manager is good with that. I had a constituent reach out to me. I went to the energy aggregation hearing, and they asked me if it will be normal for the light. I mean, the fire station's open 24/7, but it's lit up kinda like a Christmas tree right now during the construction phase. Is there a programmable electrical panel like there was at the Mitchell School? Because when I was on the building committee over there, there were issues with that, and the lights stayed on all the time, and the whole place is lit up.
Yeah, I will get you an answer on that. I honestly don't have an answer. You're correct. I thought you were gonna say the outside lights were gonna be on. But I'll defer to the chief, but I'll find out, you know, we have a meeting over there tomorrow, so that's a question I can ask, and I can send you, send the council through, Debbie, an email to answer your question.
Thank you, and I think things are great. It looks great. I think you've done a very good job keeping that, you know, under budget, on time, and, and, you know, made sure that the contingency wasn't.
Like acupuncture, you have fire station MBTA, fire station.
There you go. There you go. Yep. Take the compliment.
Thank you. Mr. Ruley, do you know, is there gonna be any type of lighting set up on the main road there to allow the trucks to come in and out and stop traffic?
So that is one of the, I think we're scheduled for the first or second week in December. So you've seen, as part of the striping, there are stop lines now on, on Pleasant Street, 104. There is a basin for an emergency signal. That conduit is being pulled tomorrow. The fabrication of the arm is almost complete, so that is, it wasn't in the original plan. It was something that we added in that we thought was necessary, but before we transition over there, that emergency signal will be in place.
Fantastic, thank you. Ms. Murphy.
Just to follow up in this maybe to the town manager, is there any update on the current fire station, what will happen with that building?
Nope, there, I think after we develop this plan and move forward, you know, we have to obviously look at Station 2. So there isn't really a plan there just yet. We've talked about it, about some potential shifting some of our staff if we do Station 2 to that station, but we'll have to navigate that. We'll have to see what remaining funds are available, et cetera.
Moving, sorry, just to clarify, moving from Station 2 to the?
As a temporary basis, if there's work that was being done at Station 2, then we'd probably have to reposition staff while that work is being done, but we don't know just yet.
So for the time being, it looks like all three areas will remain open?
Correct.
Functioning?
Yeah.
Well, there won't be, there won't be temporarily, there will not, Headquarters is moving. I think what the town manager's alluding to is that there is a significant amount of work that has to happen at Station 2. That might require that they come temporarily here so that work can be done, but then they would go back to Station 2.
But for the foreseeable future, the town's gonna keep open all three buildings as functional buildings for the?
If your question is, are we demolishing that building? No, we're not demolishing that building. Just yet.
Yeah, I'm more along the lines of keeping it open, keeping it heated, keeping it functioning.
Correct, we will have to, yeah.
Those are all the costs of the town that we'll continue to do so for the time being. Yeah. That's it, thank you.
Any further questions or comments on the fire station? Sure.
I appreciate, Mr. Ruley, that you gave us the updates and the photos. It helps me when the residents ask me questions, I appreciate that. And I also appreciate that you got this not only up to date, but ahead of date, so thank you.
Anything further on the fire station? Okay.
Again, if, if any members want a tour, just coordinate that through the, through Debbie, and then we can make arrangements. We just need 24 hours minimum heads up.
Okay. Thank you.
Highly recommend it, it's pretty impressive.
Yeah, the signs look great. Drove by earlier, it looks, looks really nice.
Yeah.
Yeah. Awesome. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, next up. You have water update and Water and Sewer Commission.
First, we'll do a water update. I'm gonna invite the zoo and our new water superintendent up to speak about the water, the water situation. But before I have our new water superintendent talk about that, kinda wanna sort of reiterate a couple of key points here. You know, obviously, we had a water presentation previously where we outlined some capacity issues, what our plans are. I think we've outlined that, outlined that several times in public, but I want the community to know, because I do know there's a lot of conversation about and concern about water. This is a priority, it's been a priority for me, I know it's a priority for the council. You know, obviously, with a new water superintendent, I thought it was important for him to introduce himself so the, so the council can get to know him, but the community get to know him. We are, we are prioritizing the water infrastructure. I'll have Bill's, like, talk briefly a little bit about the work that we're doing with DEP. We're trying to expedite things. We're trying to work as fast as possible, but also realizing these water infrastructure issues didn't develop overnight. They're years, and they're not solved overnight either. But we're working really expeditiously to try to address those issues. So I'll have Bill sort of introduce himself, talk about some of the work that we're doing as well. Further, just to reiterate kind of what we're doing.
Good evening. My name's William Young. I'm obviously the water superintendent in Bridgewater. A little bit of a professional background for me. I've been doing just water operations for the past seven years in three different municipalities, both here in Rhode Island and Massachusetts. I am fully licensed both as a water treatment operator and a water distribution operator. Over the course of the seven years, I've gotten to see a lot of these capital upgrade projects through the different towns that I've gotten to work in. I successfully managed various multi-phase capital projects from encompassing planning to procurement, all the way to final implementation. So the status where we are right now, well 10 is currently deactivated. It is, we are running a pilot study to help determine the necessary filtration for the wells to be piped officially to the High Street Treatment Facility. I am in daily contact with the engineer team at Apex and some of our staff to work diligently with DEP to expedite this process. Like I said, I'm a water operator first. I understand the concerns of the town and doing everything in my power to be able to push as long, as well as with the town manager to accomplish these goals in a timely manner to ensure water quality and successful growth within the town. We are looking at a timeline. Hopefully, within two years, like I said, right now, we're actually doing the physical pilot study to determine the filtration. And then as soon as we get these, we're moving right into dealing with DEP and getting all those permits finalized to hopefully start getting this project to the finish line. That's all I really have about wells, well 10 right now. Any questions for the town manager, myself? Gladly take any.
Questions from councillors?
So from the wells, two wells 10 or just one well 10?
So there is two wells on that site, 10A and 10B. Both of those wells need the filtration system, and both of those wells will be eventually brought to the High Street Water Treatment Plant to be filtered and treated and then sent back out to the town.
So the residents who live closer to there, is that why they're getting more brown water than the rest?
Yes, so right now, when we deactivated the wells, you started to see a pressure change within the system. A lot of the water demand is in the centralized location, Broad Street, where the tank is specifically. So where those wells are out on Plymouth Street, you're getting a pressure differential of the well is pumping, and then it's actually competing with each other. So you're getting, that's where we're getting the brown water issue still, is where that side of town is pulling back from the water, from the downstream side of the tanks and everything. I'm hoping that we can regain some stability in the tank to hopefully be able to flush that line out over the course of this winter time. And then hopefully, like I said, is the only time we're actively gonna use 10A and 10B moving forward is for fire suppression, and if there's any main breaks or other significant water emergencies where we need to supply.
Well, thank you, Mr. Young, because you make that very clear, because we've had, I live down there, so I've had a lot of residents question me, but you made that very clear, so we know what to expect now.
Thank you.
Mr. Young, welcome to Bridgewater, first off.
Thank you.
Just a couple of quick questions, hopefully they're simple. For the discoloration of the water, you had mentioned that you were talking with DEP every, every day in terms of the limit and trying to increase and trying to move the project along to connect to the High Street well.
Yep.
In a perfect world, what's the timeline look like for that?
As of right now, it's looking to be the two-year timeline that we have been looking at. Like I said, depending on how the pilot study goes and everything moving forward, we can look to expedite that process. I've talked to Jim at DEP, and we're gonna, working with them diligently to, and their engineers as well, because they're part of the approval process, to hopefully expedite that process to get the actual construction started as soon as we can.
And then looking at the times in which we've kind of been forced to turn on those wells just to, I guess, supply water to the town, seems like it's happened quite frequently over the last couple of years from the information that we've gotten. I don't anticipate that would change, right, going forward?
No. Well, yeah, so the wells right now is what we're doing is keep it offline for the purpose of, obviously, we don't wanna keep pumping in bad water. We will obviously have to at some point. Right now, we are at a okay standpoint. I am looking at other opportunities with other towns to possibly get an emergency connection instead of having to turn on this well. It's just a matter of like DEP approval and the water availability of other towns as well.
You use the term "bad water." What do you mean by that?
I wouldn't say, I take that back, I apologize. It's not that it's bad water, it's just that there is a secondary level of contamination, or not contamination, that's what it is classified as, but it is more of a filtration issue. The iron just doesn't, isn't settling out. It's gonna take its time. I've... I'll have to get back to you on that one.
Just in the meantime, are there any, this, I understand from you, two years at best would be sort of the solution to this. Is there anything short-term we could do for folks to have to live with the discoloration for two years? There has to be.
I'm gonna take this one, Bill. So I think one thing that's really important is, is obviously, since I've come to town, we also have a new superintendent. I think we're taking a fresh set of eyes, look at this. So looking at every opportunity that we can look to mitigate this issue during that time. We understand that two years is a long time period. We're aware of that. We're looking at everything. So we're exploring every opportunity. We're, as Bill said, we're talking with DEP and Jim McLaughlin often. We're looking at some secondary sources of, of, sources of water as well, so we know I've, we've had conversations with. So we know, we've had conversations with Middleborough regarding that. So we're looking at every opportunity. I think that's really important for people here with this group. We're looking at every opportunity to sort of mitigate that issue until we get this resolved for the long term.
I appreciate that. Just a follow-up to that question. When you say looking at every opportunity, is there any opportunity that you've come across so far that would address this issue in the near term? I know that's a difficult question, but...
Yeah, it's difficult. I'll let Azu chime in, then I might give my own.
So I don't want him to take all the heat, because he's new in town, and I don't want him to start regretting taking the job. But it's all good. So one of the things that we're doing, the two-year timeframe, it's really a conservative estimate for the simple reason that it's good to under-promise and over-achieve, I think. So one of the things to assuage some of that concern that you have, one of the things that we are doing, and DEP is looking favorable towards that. So the other two components to running the well tends to High Street. One is, you know, the infrastructure that we need to build at the well site, which requires DEP approval. But the other aspect that relates to that transmission is laying the pipe work in the ground. Okay? That doesn't really require DEP approval. But we are cognizant of the fact that they need to know what we are doing. So I think that aspect, we can move along quicker so that once we get the pilot study approved and the treatment system complete, then the only work we'll be doing will be at the wellhead. And so the pipe in the ground would already been in. So I am looking that we can get that done within that two-year period once we start laying the pipe in. And, but we do have a preliminary discussion with East Bridgewater and, like Bill said, Middleborough. So if push comes to shove, we will be able to at least get some emergency supply. But part of the issue that we also have to be aware of is that when you're doing inter-municipality, it's not like what you do with the fire, where you, you know, being a fire truck and equipment to fight fire. When you're talking water supply, you have to look at a treatment train in the other community to make sure that it's compatible with your treatment. Okay? So that's the only issue. But we are working, you know? And I think, hopefully, by the end of our winter, we can start talking about laying the pipe in the ground to get that, you know, to move the project along.
Yeah, I just, I wanna say I thank you all. I know you're working, so I do wanna recognize that. And I think the work that you're doing, I think just from a citizen's standpoint, it's a tough pill to swallow to say two years. You know, you have to live with this for two years. And I don't know that that's anybody's fault in the room, but that's, it's truly a tough pill to swallow, right? We can all acknowledge that. And so I do think everything needs to be on the table, and we need to start acting on some of those emergency measures or whatever we could do to voice our opinions, you know, beyond our town that's suffering right now.
Well, I would tell you that our DEP that does a lot of the approval, because you're talking public water supply. So we can't just do it right here alone. But what they've done, what they did for us when we replaced Wells Five and Nine, it was moved at warp speed, something that usually would take about a year to get your approval. DEP did it in two months. So they recognized, and they've been getting calls from the town residents. So they wanna see us get this resolved. And we are moving, okay? So two years is, I know it's, but believe me, it will come around pretty quick. We'll get this behind us.
I think to add to what Azu said there, there's a commitment from all of our team. It's not only the residents have called. I've called. I spoke with Jim McLaughlin several times. Azu has had those conversations. We're trying to work with them to expedite whatever we can in a responsible way, understanding that we've gotta work with the state agency to manage this. But they know that we're committed to trying to move forward with this, and I think the public should hear that directly from us. We are looking at everything. We're trying to work in a timely manner, and that's the commitment from our group. We will do that while we can.
And then, I'll pass it off. Sorry, back to you, but just the Water and Sewer Commission, if we could address that after this at some point?
Yep.
That's it. Thank you.
Mark, was your comment on the water? Yes. So new eyes and veteran eyes, good teamwork. My question has to do with the future. We have two projects. One's approved, well, the other one's approved. Doesn't have a water permit yet. Will we have the capacity with this issue to meet those needs?
Are you talking about once 10A is piped, 10A and 10B are piped to High Street?
I mean, we have, they're on Broad Street. They're right near the High Street well. You know, the Foundry Project and the Broad Street Project.
Yes. Right. With Wells 10A and 10B, we will be able to meet and exceed expectations of the water supply with demand and system maintenance and everything like that. Those projects, there's more projects that are coming down
Yeah.
the line, obviously, that I can't speak to myself. I haven't been here long enough. Azu wants to speak towards it.
So, so the project, those projects will not actually be online until about a year to two years. And so, so they will, so... What those wells will do for us is that all those fluctuations that we keep having in water supply, those wells produce good volume, so they will provide stability to our water supply. Okay? Once we get them online. The issue is that discoloration. So once that taken care of, and I bet you some of those projects are not coming online for, in that period. So the only, to address your earlier question and concern, in reality, in reality, what will happen is we are gonna hit another spike in summer, right? Where people are watering their lines and stuff. So that, hopefully, by the time we get the other pipe that we're talking about putting in the ground, will be in the ground, and then we'll work with DEP to fast-track the infrastructure work. So we, I can see the light at the end of the tunnel, and I'm telling you, it ain't the incoming freight train. It's a friendly train. Okay? So we're gonna get there. We're gonna get there.
Councillor Kenny?
Just a few questions. So 10B is currently off?
Yes.
All right. You mentioned that there's still sediment. Is that just sediment in the line from the turbulence from the two wells pumping simultaneously?
No. So there's still sedimentation in the mains themselves is because we're not trying to flush the water main right now because we're trying to stave the stability of the water tanks
Okay.
and not have to reactivate Well 10.
Okay. During the yearly maintenance, or the maintenance that gets done on those, when, once you do flush, does those residents see relief on that discoloration, once the flushing occurs?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a ballpark for the cost of that tie-in from the Wells to High Street?
I, Azu...
So, so right now, and I guess it's a pretty conservative estimate, it's about seven and a half million.
And then my last question for you. With Well B 10 off, what is the process or how fast can you turn a well on? Is that something you do remotely? Do you need to send somebody to the well?
So we would have to call in staff to activate that well. It would take a matter of an hour from phone call to activation.
Okay. Just thinking of fire suppression and things like that with some of our large warehouse buildings. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions? Councillor Ellenberg?
Well, we have potentially a lot of new building coming to town. With quantity versus quality, we've been discussing quality all along. But quantity, where do you see the town getting water for potential growth?
We have that water available. Once these, once this High Street project comes down line. It's not about the quantity issue we have necessarily. It's about the quality. These wells would be able to supply sufficient water for the demand we have now and future growth.
One thing that I think we made very clear about in the presentation we gave, the water presentation previously, that doesn't preclude us from taking a look at other opportunities as well. And I think we've addressed that we're looking at the Vernon Street wells. That's something that we have capability to add to our capacity, potentially. We've looked at, you know, potentially looking, opportunity to tie in with Brockton's water service. So even though this getting Well 10 filtered was gonna add to our capacity, for our water capacity, we still have to look for other opportunities too, right? Because as I mentioned before, it's about being strategic. It's about looking forward and being forward-thinking as well, not just addressing immediacy, but looking at future growth for the town. So I think those are the options that we laid out in our presentation, and those are the same options that I think I would say to you, Councillor Ellenberg.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Bill, and welcome to the town. So just a quick question on when we do get the filtration set on up. Obviously, you know, we're filtering out the iron and the manganese. What about calcium and the hardness of the water? Because I do think I seen residents talk about, you know, the calcium in the water really mucking up the pipes and showerheads and things of that nature. Is the filtration that's gonna be set up on High Street gonna take out the calcium as well and work on the hardness of the water?
A little bit, yes. That's a three-phase question in my book from treatment standpoint. That is something that engineers are looking at as we speak. That's part of why we're doing this pilot study, is to make those determinations and decide the best filtration process to achieve those goals.
Great. Thank you. And I would encourage making sure that we get the calcium out of there, too.
Councillor Allen?
Yes. Where are you doing the pilot study in Bridgewater?
It's actively on Well 10.
Okay.
Any further questions? I have a few of mine. Any further questions? So it sounds like there's a lot of encouragement from activating these wells and having them filtered. It's the first time, not the first time, but we're starting to get some kind of clarity around capacity because there's a lot of discussion of what capacity is. So if these wells are now filtered, are we now up against our permitted capacity? Are we above our permitted capacity? Do we have to apply to increase that capacity?
That is a determination that I am nowhere near ready to determine. It's, there's a lot of factors into it. It's obviously with the development of the town. And what we have right now is there's gonna, that is a loaded question that I am not prepared yet to answer myself. That is something that Azu or one of the engineers would be able to determine better.
Yeah, so in terms of the water supply and the demand, right now, what we're pumping, we are actually meeting our demand, right? But once we get those wells online, that will stabilize our water supply. In terms of getting that, we are permitted for 1.98, and right now, we are right about 1.4, 1.4, 1.5. So we do have enough headspace, if you will, for, I've calculated it over time. Average, if you were to add new homes, just because it's, it is a metrics, it's a metric that is easily understood versus saying this square footage of office space, this square footage of retail. So if you were to consider just basically homes, we can accommodate, if you will, almost 1,500 bedrooms. Okay? At 110 gallons per bedroom, that's a lot of water. But the problem is, we are not able to pump at that level until we get this Well 10 on. Then going forward, with what the town manager alluded to earlier concerning Vernon Street wells, once we get those, if we get to that point where we can bring Vernon Street wells on, based on the conversations we have had with DEP, then they can entertain, if we request it, they will entertain allowing an increase to perhaps 2.2 from 1.98.
So I'm encouraged to hear about emergency connections. The first time I've heard that solution being offered. What would the timeline look like if it was something that we are going to pursue?
For an emergency connection, if we are going through East Bridgewater, we're probably talking a month to do the connection if we get the approval on an emergency basis.
Who approves that?
Pardon me?
Who approves that?
Well, DEP still.
Department of Health, or Department of...
Environmental Protection.
I mean, I don't see any better emergency than what we have here, so why don't we start right now?
No, this is a clear thing. We've had those conversations. It goes to DEP. They have to make that determination. So we have had those conversations. Now it's gotta go through that regulatory process. Because as Azu had mentioned earlier, we have to understand that our systems are different. There's different factors that need to be accounted for. And so DEP is ultimately the seer. We could say, hey, we wanna do that, but they have to make that determination.
Well, if there's anything that we could do as a council, let us know. We've got children sitting back there who don't have access to clean water. And I don't see what better, you know, time to call for emergency than right now. I'm glad that we're going down that route.
To you, Mr. President, to one of these two gentlemen, does the town of East Bridgewater also have to approve it?
No, because the town of East Bridgewater actually gets water, or they have the same deal with the city of Brockton. So...
Silver Lake.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything further? Okay. Thank you. Thank you, guys.
The thing that I wanna add, that I added to the agenda as well is the conversation about the Water and Sewer Board, Sewer Commission. I just wanna be very clear. As I've mentioned several times, we have issues with boards and committees within town. They're not well-populated. Even though our more popular populated committees have issues with quorum and so forth, you know, I said that I would take a commitment. I'm gonna look at all our boards and commissions. We have several defunct commissions that haven't operated, that haven't had appointments. People haven't had their terms reappointed. So I wanna make sure that we're being more effective with that. And so I'm reviewing all those boards and committees. When I look at the Water and Sewer Board, for example, recently in the admin code, it was changed what were the requirements to be on that board or committee. They also, when I look at it, for example, and why I'm not gonna make appointments to that board and committee, it specifically says that the Water and Sewer Board Commission makes recommendations to the town manager on water rates. I don't necessarily think that makes any sense. This is how it operated before, and we've seen this in many communities where they've artificially kept the rate lower because they wanna keep the rate lower on users and residents. But that doesn't allow you to fund the infrastructure that you need. I don't see that as necessary. We hired a professional, independent group to come in and review our water rates. That's who I wanna rely upon, right? So I won't be making appointments that while I review boards and committees. So that's kind of what I'll say. I won't speak specifically to any one individual resume, but that's the reason why I'm not making an appointment there.
Any questions on the Water and Sewer Board, councillors? Question for our town attorney. Who determines the language that's in the descriptions for our boards, committees, and commissions for what we're looking for?
You mean in the admin code?
Well, all that I saw was on the website, so I guess, I guess that's coming from the admin code. Is that correct?
I don't know what you saw, but the admin code is what directs multi-member body committees, outlines them, talks about the qualifications. Some membership bodies, such as yourself, is addressed in the charter. But most of the other multi-member body boards and committees are addressed in the admin code. And the admin code is essentially an ordinance that was approved by the town council.
Oh, so it's not in the charter?
I don't, you talking about Water and Sewer? I'd have to look. I don't believe so. I think, I think it's likely in the admin code. Most boards and committees are addressed in the admin code.
Okay. Thank you. Anything further? Okay. Next up, we have town social media and town signs.
I know the question has been roached. I think town signs was roached. I didn't put it on the last agenda because our previous town clerk sort of identified how the town signs are, or who handles town signs. And I just wanna confirm that the town clerk handles those town signs. In regards to the town's social media, there's multiple Facebook posts, Facebook accounts. Different departments are responsible for that. In terms of our main town Facebook page, my office handles that. I know a specific question was asked about, I think, a library sponsoring an event. And I've had a conversation with our department. That should be filtered through the town manager's office. So I think that's something that all of our departments are gonna be, are aware of and will know. But in terms of town's social media, you know, our main page is handled by my office. Different departments have their own. And then the town signs is handled by the town... departments have their own, and then the town signs is handled by the town clerk.
Different topic on town signs. This happened before our town manager got here, but right now, we have a sign across the street at the old townhouse that says Town Hall. This is the academy building, and there was a question and a concern for people to wonder if there was any way to have a Town Hall sign actually here at Town Hall. So maybe put that on the tickler list for the future. It's pretty obvious to me, it was when I came here, but it isn't obvious to everybody.
Thank you. Any, anything from councilors?
Just a couple of follow-ups. I know this was my question, so I appreciate you answering that. The only thing I guess I would request, and certainly your discretion, would be that maybe we come up with some common guidelines for both of these? The usage of social media and what maybe we could advise departments on what to post and how to post, I think would be just, just good to give them some rough guidelines of, you know, best practices around posting, so that myself as a citizen doesn't see another department post something that may be controversial or concerning, but more sticking towards what we would say is sort of their expertise or their area of what they represent. I just think it's good to have something in place before it's too late and we're trying to rein something back. And I would say the same thing for the town signage, too. I think it would be helpful to have some guidance around that. What is being posted up there? I notice sometimes, you know, meeting dates are up there, it's good information. Sometimes there's topics up there that pertain to the meeting dates, but sometimes there isn't. And so maybe just some general guidelines from the town clerk, and I'm happy to work with her and suggest to her the same thing. But again, just some guidelines of when and if and how things are written up there, I think would be really helpful. Again, before it's too late and something gets put up there that maybe shouldn't be put up there. But again, that's all my suggestion to you.
Well, one, I think in regards to a social media policy, it's another thing that we're reviewing in my office. We're reviewing a lot of things in our, in the office. We're looking at HR, we're looking at those policies. I don't disagree with you, having a social media policy, a standard policy for everyone's important. In regards to the town clerk, I'm not going to weigh in on that. She's an elected town clerk. If you want to have that conversation with her, I encourage you to do that.
Thank you.
Anything further from the councilors? Okay, I think we have the MBTA assessment last here.
Yeah, so this was a question that I know some of our councilors had posed, as well as a resident before, so I wanted to follow up on that. You know, the question was, when did we start having MBTA assessment? That was back in 2002. In the past 10 years, we've, from cherry sheet allotments that are assessed to us, is about $1.6 million. That has been assessed to us the past 10 years. All this information is, and I encourage people to do this, because there's a lot of information on the Department of Local Services, the DLS is what it's better known as. There's a databank that has all the information. I encourage people to take a look, that has a lot of information there. But if people are interested in further diving into those numbers and seeing what the annual amounts are, you can find that online at the DLS cherry sheet assessment site. So, wanted to follow up on those questions. And I think last year, or excuse me, this year, the MBTA assessment is $157,000.
So we pay $157,000 to have the train there, essentially?
Correct. It's an assessment on the town's cherry sheet.
Okay.
To you, Mr. President, to the town manager. Mr. Casanova, who pays for the parking? Don't you have to park on those, on those parking spots at the train station? They're paid. Does that money go to Wassa, or does that go to BSH?
I don't know that. Well, I have to follow up with you.
Okay, thank you. Because I know there's like 100 parking spots, I think.
I want to clarify where you're talking about. If it's the municipal parking lot, then that's to the town, but I want to clarify, so I'll follow up with you.
Okay, thank you.
On the municipal parking lot, I wanted to find out how long our lease is for and what are the terms of that lease.
Anything further from councilors? Okay, thank you very much. Questions for a future meeting?
Well, just a question for the future meeting, and that is having to do with revenue. And I know that we're having a general town audit, and could a specific audit be obtained for the golf course revenues and see that our town is getting all revenue? Thank you.
Thank you. Any other requests from councilors? Okay, all right, thank you very much. We do not have any discussions for, do we have any committee reports? I know that rules of procedures, did you guys meet, or?
Yeah, I forgot. It's so busy. Yeah, we met on Zoom, and we passed, I can't remember which one we did.
It was the change to the voting process to fill a councillor seat.
Oh, yeah, yeah, we've been working on that one for so long, going back and forth, yeah. So we voted three to zero, yes.
Okay, great. Any other committee reports, so that Budget and Finance met earlier, do you want to do that now, or when we have those items up?
Yeah, we're just going to give a quick update on the discussion topics we talked about. And so the Budget and Finance Committee of the town council had a presentation by the audit company that the town employs annually to do the town audit. We got a great overview of what specifically that company looks into, how they look into it, the timeline they spend with Bridgewater. So it was really good, in-depth process, a lot of great questions were answered. So I just wanted to thank the finance department and our town manager for setting that up and allowing folks to hear a little bit more in-depth of what that process looks like and how it's carried out. The next thing we talked about was tax exemptions. We talked about both the HERO Act with veterans and the senior exemption for senior citizens in town, two areas that the Budget and Finance Committee agreed that we will continue to look at in preparation, hopefully, for fiscal year '27, and hopefully helping out both our veterans and seniors in a more productive way. We also talked a little bit about advertising, sort of that senior exemption, a little further than what we do now, and so that more folks are aware of the opportunity and can take advantage of that opportunity as well, too. The senior exemption is a fully, well, I shouldn't say fully, but is a reimbursement that comes from the state. So we have up to 60 slots, and we have, I think it was four, four, one, two, three, four individuals that are currently taking advantage of that. So there's a lot of opportunity for folks to take advantage of that tax exemption, and so we're hoping to help get the word out there, working with our town manager and other town staff. So more to come on both of those, and hopefully we'll see them on the agenda for the town council over the course of the next few months.
All right, thank you very much. Any other committee reports?
Not a report, just a reminder that the planning board and CED will be meeting jointly on December 30.
Thank you very much. Okay, so nothing further on committee reports. We will now move on to legislation for action with Order FY26-030, FY2026 Classification Tax Allocation Adoption of a Residential Tax Factor. So we did have a Budget and Finance meeting earlier tonight, which I'll defer to Councilor Murphy to update us on. The Finance Committee did meet yesterday, and they voted seven, nothing to recommend. So I'll refer over to Councilor Murphy for an update on this one.
Yeah, not much of an update, because we had such a great discussion, we didn't have much time left to get to some of this legislation. And so the Finance, Budget and Finance Committee decided to give it back to the town council without a recommendation. So we sent it back, no recommendation.
Great, thank you. So, yeah, at this time, the Budget and Finance Committee did not have enough time to fully vet this out. We want to send this back to the council so that we could then entertain a motion to refer to advertising, so that we could have our public hearing. And in the meantime, we will continue to deliberate amongst ourselves, and then obviously in a public forum at a public hearing. We did not want to slow down the process and keep it in committee, because we do need to pass this before the end of the year, so that we could send out our tax bills and continue to get revenue for the town. So just a little bit of an explanation on that one. So with that being said, I would entertain a motion to refer to advertising.
So move.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this one? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you very much. Next up, Order FY26-031, the Finance Committee met yesterday, they voted seven, nothing to recommend, and then Budget and Finance met earlier today, and as we alluded to, we did have some time constraints, so I'll just refer to Councilor Murphy for this one, and we might as well just cover the rest of these while we're at it.
Yeah, nothing more to add. We did vote to continue the next three orders due to time constraints, but we, I didn't mention this, but I will now. We also agreed that we will have to meet more frequently, given it's budget season and there are still items before us. So Budget and Finance Committee will look to meet more frequently, so you may see additional meetings pop up on the calendar, but more to come on that.
Great, thank you. And to our town attorney, do I have to make a motion here, or we're just keeping it in committee and it's not sent back to the council at this time? So do we need to take any action on these next three items?
No, if they're, if they're still in committee, there's no action to take. I would just continue each one of the items to a later meeting.
So do we have to make a motion on each of these to continue?
Yes.
Okay, so I'll entertain a motion to continue then? We have a motion and a second? Any discussion?
Are we voting on all three?
Oh, we have to do them one at a time.
Okay.
So, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so we'll just move on to the next one. This is FY26-032, Transfer Order for Contractual Payments. The Finance Committee did vote six, one to recommend at their meeting yesterday. We already had an explanation here, so I'd entertain a motion to continue.
So move.
And we have a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
And any opposed? Okay, motion carries. And last one, this is FY26-033, Transfer Order for CPC Engineering for Multifunctional Fields. Finance Committee voted, looks like five, one, one, to recommend yesterday at their meeting, and again, we'll entertain a motion to continue this one as well.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
And any opposed? Okay, thank you.
And just for clarification, you were voting those to continue, based on your discussions? I'm assuming you're voting to continue those for the first date after Budget and Finance Committee meets to discuss those things?
Yes, yes, thank you for the clarification.
We don't have a date certain, but that is as certain of a date as we can create.
Yes, thank you. We'll note that in the minutes. We do not have any old business, we'll now move on to new business. Order FY26-034, Laying Out and Acceptance of a Private Way. This is for Calthrup Drive Extension, and this was sponsored by, who is it sponsored by?
Myself.
Councilor Kennedy, so I'll ask you to just introduce this to us?
Sure. It's laying out an acceptance of a private way. We've had a few of these come through the council, looking to get this referred to the planning board, so we can get more information about it and take an educated vote. This comes through me as a district councillor, that's why I have it.
Thank you. So I do believe we need to take a vote to have the intent to take the way, and then the next vote would be to refer to the planning board. So do I have a motion for the intent to take the way?
So move.
We have a motion and a second. Any, any discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
And any opposed? Okay, so the next motion we'd entertain would be to refer to the planning board, so do I have a motion and a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Next, Order FY26-035, Transfer Order, this is for the General Fund Free Cash Allocation, and I will defer to our town manager to introduce this one.
As part of the annual process, once the town has its free cash certified, then we as a, as a staff, obviously collaborate with the council, we make recommendations on how to transfer those funds of free cash. So we have about $4.3 million in free cash, and as we undergo the budget process, it goes to FinCom and the Budget Subcommittee, we'll outline why we're making these recommendations to the Stabilization Fund, capital, our OPEB funds, and employee liability, and our one-time unforeseen funds.
Thank you very much. So with that, we'll entertain a motion to refer to Budget and Finance and Finance Committee?
So move.
Exactly, we have a motion and a second. Any, any discussion on this one? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next up, Order FY26-035, Transfer Order for the Bridgewater-Rainham School District Operational Review. So with that, I'll refer to our town manager, this is the result of a resolution and then process of working through our working group.
As the council president said just now, obviously, we heard the council and their desire to try to collaborate on our operational view. There's been work that's undertaken to work with our school committee to do that review. This $33,913 of this town's portion of that review, I think the council president wants to add some information regarding that, but this, this is our portion of that. I do know that Rainham did pass funds for this, their portion of the review at their town meeting just recently.
Yes, so just a little bit of overview, I know that we had a resolution here that allowed us to kind of work with the working group, go through that process. I think Council Strickles for her involvement and anybody else that showed up to those meetings. We did have the school committee put this out to bid. It was bid upon, and we did have a, an amount of $55,000, which was estimated for this work, and following the same kind of calculations with how we allocate funding between the two towns, our portion is this $33,913 for that review. The scope, which was jointly discussed and ultimately agreed upon, is attached to the order here for us to kind of just have an overview. That is what the, the work was bid upon, that was also, you know, brought up to the council as well, and this is just allocating, or rather appropriating the funds to have that review done. Rainham, as our town manager did mention, did vote on this last night at their town meeting, and I spoke to one of their submen, and it was a unanimous voice vote, so they have the full support from Rainham. So with that being said, I would entertain a motion to refer this for review to our Budget and Finance and our Finance Committee.
So move.
We have a motion and a second. Any, any discussion on this one?
I would just like to thank Council President Loretty for joining me with the working group. We worked diligently to make sure that the scope remained what both towns saw as the most beneficial going forward, because we do see the value in making sure that we have an objective third-party analysis of our school system, just to make sure that everything is the way that it needs to be in an operational and financial review, because we all know that that word override might be coming down the pike, and we need to make sure that we are doing our due diligence now and getting ahead of any potential problems for the future. So I just wanted to thank Council President Loretty again, and our town manager, who was actively involved in the conversations as well.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
I'll take it. I just want to say thank you to Council Strickles and Council Loretty for taking the time to do this, trying to keep this in a scope that we think is going to benefit the both towns and the district itself, and I do hope that some good information comes of this one way or another. So thank you for taking the time to, to work on this.
Thank you.
Just, I'm probably going to sound like a broken record, and I'm not going to support this for the sole reason of, I don't believe we should use Bridgewater taxpayer money to the tune of $33,000 for this review. I think the problems that are occurring in our school systems and other places than our town are a result of lack of funding from the state, and I don't believe that anything we find in a $55,000 report is going to give us that return on investment. I think most of us know what the issues are, and I would rather see money go towards more helpful, useful things in town. So I will vote no on this, also respecting other councilors and the feelings of the school committee. I just don't feel like this is a good use of Bridgewater citizens' taxpayer money.
Thank you. Anything further, councilors?
Yeah, thank you both, councilors, for doing a deep, you covered everything. I was pretty impressed that you got so much, and you got approved by it. So I really like this one. I know it does cost money, but I think in the long run, you know, just like our town manager's doing a review of his department, I think, I think we'll find, at least it'll rest the questions, and it'll be transparent. So I think hopefully we'll find the money, but either way, I think it's, it's a good idea, so thank you both.
Thank you, Councilor Allenberg.
I wanted to say thank you to you both also for going through this, and I think that things like capital expenditures and so forth can be reviewed, but I think that this is, will satisfy the constituents who have so many questions about what goes on at the school and feel like it is opaque. And so I think that this sunlight is the best disinfectant, not that it necessarily needs disinfecting, I'm not casting aspersions, but I do think that, you know, for keeping a tight ship, this is something that we need to do.
Thank you.
Thank you, and I would just say one more thing. I was very much in the camp as Councilor Murphy was, I didn't really want to utilize our residents' funds through their taxpaying dollars for something like this, but then the more I had conversations. But then the more I had conversations with people that voted no in the override, it always came back to an operational review or an audit of wanting to see a layer of transparency that they felt was missing. So I looked at it as the greatest olive branch that we could possibly have to reach some of those people who need that data and that supportive data that we simply didn't provide them enough with. So that's how I was able to kind of go from being on the fence, wanting to be involved, to make sure that the scope was respectful of everyone involved, but also wanting to potentially pull some of those nos into even a maybe so that we can have some productive conversations.
Great. Anything further?
Thank you both for your work. I think it's important that we do this for transparency and sunshine. I mean, we have something going on at a state level where 72% of the voters said that an audit should happen and it's not happening with the state legislature. I think this will put a lot of questions aside. I don't know if it'll change votes, but I think a no to a maybe is a step forward.
Thank you. Anything further, councillors?
I just want to clarify and say that I am also thankful for the work that you've done, so I didn't want it to appear like I wasn't thankful for that. My belief is that our problems are at a higher level and I don't think Bridgewater should have to pay to justify those problems that are coming from a higher level. And so that's just my point of view, but I do recognize the work that you put in and what you've presented. And so I will offer additional solutions to the higher-level issues somewhere down the line. I think tomorrow's a good start in that, at the hearing that Desi's holding in Lakeville. I plan on attending, but again, I just don't support spending Bridgewater taxpayer money to tell us what we already know. That's my opinion, but again, thank you for the work that you've done. I want to make that clear.
Thank you. Anything further, councillors? Yeah, I agree, we have a funding issue at the state level. We're not having those funds coming back into our community. I look forward to going to that hearing tomorrow night with Council Murphy and also exploring other solutions such as this. And I look forward to discussing this further. But without further ado, let's take a vote on referring to committee. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Oh, sorry. That's no. Now we'll move on to order FY 26-037 Transfer Order for Bridgewater-Rainham School District Capital Plan Transfer. I'll defer to our town manager.
This is an order that associates the capital funding required to fund the Bridgewater-Rainham School District. I know this number isn't new for the council. This was what was discussed as part of the original budget. So what we wanted to do in recognition of Rainham passing the funds for capital, we wanted to make sure we were working timely as well. The town will submit its capital improvement plan in probably our next council meeting. I have a commitment from Mr. Powers to also appear before the Budget Finance Committee. I don't know if we've typically done that to talk about the capital projects, but even further beyond that, I just wanted to share with the council. I know we've heard about, you know, some angst about the various ways we tackle capital with each community. I've worked with Superintendent Powers as well as Town Administrator Barnes to work on an agreement. And I think we have a memorandum of understanding how we will approach capital together, having a same process. Ultimately, we'll have to change our charter to do that, but we'll do this in sort of congruence with this capital plan transfer. So I did want to share that. We've been working on that.
Any questions with the town manager on that note?
Just me with my straightforward clarifying question again. You had mentioned changing the charter, so I'd assume-
Excuse me, regional agreement. I said charter, regional agreement.
Regional agreement. Regional agreement states that we have to give that money upfront in a whole sum.
So that, I'm glad you said that. I think I was going to get into the Budget Finance Committee. We've been talking to Desi about this process and that's part of why I don't have a memorandum of understanding just yet. But they have sort of given us the green light to pursue this process. And so I think we're in the all-clear with that. Did I answer your question?
No, I think you made it more complicated.
I made it more complicated. What you said was we had to give it in advance, right?
Yes.
Yeah, no, we can do this process.
Do we have to give it in advance?
No.
Okay.
And that's part of why we've had these conversations with Superintendent Powers, Desi, myself, and the Rainham Town Administrator, just to make sure we're all on the same page.
But this, and just to clarify, this is to give it in advance?
No, what the process was before is as part of the budget process, when you approve the budget in May or so when you did this, you allocated capital at that point, sort of in advance. What we're looking to do as part of this memorandum of understanding as well is what we're trying to do is codify that, hey, we're going to do capital in the fall, because that's when we typically do capital. That's where Rainham does their capital as well, generally, at special town meeting. So we're trying to make sure we're all on the same page in appropriating capital at the same time.
Okay, I'm sorry, just to clarify further, my understanding is that Rainham pays, will receive an invoice for capital improvements and pay that invoice?
That's what I'm referencing. Each community has done this differently. Rainham has given the allotment in advance for capital. Excuse me, Bridgewater gave the allotment in advance. Rainham would do a sort of pay-as-you-go approach. You know, since I've come here, obviously, that's something that I don't think we want to continue. And that's why I mentioned we've talked about making sure we have the same capital process for each community. And so that's part of what will be part of that memorandum of understanding. So this appropriation is at the same time as Rainham and we're going to have the same process in terms of appropriating funds. We'll dive into it further in the Budget Subcommittee. Okay, yeah. I think once you see-
I wonder if this clarifies kind of what Council Murphy's getting at. We vote to appropriate these funds, where do these funds go?
In your packet, you have a capital plan.
Yep.
And so we've submitted Rainham's capital plan and that's what Superintendent Powers can speak to, but it's going to go for capital projects. And I think once you see that memorandum of understanding, it's going to go to capital projects.
Why can't we do a pay-as-you-go? Oh, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
I think most important, wait for the memorandum of understanding. I think we might be able to get there, but we want to make sure that Desi is on the same page with us as well.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you. So the funds are going to go into a capital that we hold, Bridgewater holds? Or is it going straight to the school?
I think what I'll say is let us finalize that and we'll be on the same page there. It is going to be specifically for the capital projects that are in the capital plan. You know, I think conversations with Rainham and as well as the superintendent is that the money that we appropriate for capital has to go to capital projects. It can't go to E&amp;D, it can't go to anything like that. So making sure we have the same process for everyone in every community, that's what the focus is, to capital projects. Now, just to play this out a little bit, you may have projects that run a little bit higher. You might have projects that run a little bit lower. Well, if you appropriate specifically to capital, if there's savings at all, you can appropriate from the Capital Stabilization Fund for those capital projects. Are you with me with there a little bit? But it will not fall to E&amp;D like it has typically been doing. That is the one thing that will be changed moving forward.
The kind of thing that I'd like to see is invoices. So it goes exactly for what it says and if there's any extra, it comes back to us. That's why we have to keep it tight. But I would like to see an explanation of all these items and who submitted the requests to the Powers, I guess. And I think they should not only submit the information, but the work orders and the invoices. I want to know how many cameras, is the cost of them installing them? I mean, I don't, this is a list that I get all the time from the school. I mean, if we compare it, what Mr. Rully presents us for the fire station, that's what I expect. I expect to see how many, how old are the laptops, you know, why are we changing them? I need information and I need an explanation. I need to know, you know, is it installing the same? Where are we getting them from? It's just too much up in the air with taxpayer money for me to prove it.
Anything further, councillors?
I agree 100% with Council McGrath and I think this is how we get stuff. We don't even have gridlines here and we have no explanation. I think we need to have it.
One more question for you, I guess maybe this is to the town attorney. If we don't certify this, if we don't pass this, are we not in compliance with Desi?
Yeah, I mean, I think you need to appropriate the funds. Otherwise, it could be an issue with Desi, but I think that's what the town manager's getting at. He wants to vet this out further. He's waiting on, obviously, he doesn't want to get into contractual discussions that he's probably having at this point. So yeah, it could become a problem. But this is first reading, so I'm not even going to dive into the hypotheticals right now. I don't, you know I don't give advice in hypotheticals. So I think it should be vetted out in Budget and Finance. And then, once we have better answers, it sounds to me, as the town manager has indicated, the answers might become more clear in the very near future. Again, this is first reading, so we're a long ways away from you guys approving it. So I think you have some time to vet this and get your answers.
Thanks for picking it up.
With that being said, we don't have a motion yet, but I would entertain a motion to refer to Budget and Finance and Finance Committee. Second of a motion and a second. Any further discussion on this item?
I would just say thank you to the town manager. I'm happy that we're finally talking about this, because I do think that this goes in line with that operational review. If both towns are in alignment, we're going to be much more, it's going to be much more beneficial, not only to our students, but to our district as a whole, if we're spending in the same way. So I just want to say thank you for that. I understand that we're at the preliminary stages of it and I trust that whatever you come back with will be what's in the town's best interest, so I'm trusting that.
Thank you. Anything further?
Yeah, I guess I'll move it forward based on, because the town attorney explained it clearly, that we still have time to stop it. Second.
Yeah, it's worth deliberating further, so unless there's any further discussion, we'll go for a vote. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Next, we have Proposed Ordinance FY 26-008 Proposed Amendment 2, Part 3 of the Administrative Code, Chapter 14, Article 1, Section 1, Referring to Dogs. And I'll defer over to Councilor Kennedy for this one.
Yep, so this was brought to my attention. I work with the clerk's office to make sure that this is in line with our current ordinances. This addresses Ollie's Law, which has to do with Kennel reporting and things like that, as it was something that was brought to my attention. It's something that I would support changing, just to make sure we're in compliance with Massachusetts general law. That's kind of the gist of it. Any questions?
Any questions for Council Murphy? Murphy, sorry, Kennedy, sorry. I'm looking at, I'm looking at Council Murphy, Council Kennedy. You could ask him questions too. So with that being said, I'll entertain a motion to refer to rules and procedures to vet this out further.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
And any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Next, we have Resolution FY 26-002. This is for town council meeting dates for 2026. And this was proposed by me, with the help of our town council clerk, thank you very much. So this is just for our 2026 town council meeting dates. These are the first and second Tuesdays, in accordance with our charter, with the exception of the summer. And something that I've been talking about with our town council clerk and our town manager is to do a public meeting as is stated in our charter. So looking forward to discussing that with you all, perhaps, you know, next time we bring this up. We would potentially do something in January. The council calls for, the charter rather calls for it, it's not something that we've done before. So it's something that I think we should do, get input from our constituents, from the public, and in a public forum as part of one of our town council meetings. Like I said, I think January would be a good time to do that, start off the new year, getting some input from our councillors. So with that being said, I would entertain a motion to keep this at the town council level.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Last, we have Resolution FY 26-003. This is the FY 2027 Budget Resolution. And this was brought to us by Council Dr. Perry.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is the official start of our FY 2027 budget season. Starts off with a resolution that council does each and every year. I did last year's resolution and it falls in line with many years of similar resolutions. That's gotten the town to the level that it's at right now. Though this year, a couple little small changes that we're looking to propose. Prior resolutions had us basically target our unreserved fund balance of free cash at 2%. This one's looking to call for 1% just to give us a little bit more flexibility in our operating budget to cover expenses that we're going to need to cover. But this will also be discussed in further detail as we go along through the process. But it's, that's the big change. And then we're looking to see stabilization be maintained at 10.5% as opposed to prior resolutions listed at 10%. Those are the two changes in there for this resolution.
Okay, thank you very much for that. So that being said, I'd entertain a motion to refer to Budget and Finance and Finance Committee.
Second.
Any discussion on this one? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. And that is all for new business. We'll now move on to citizen comments. Due to Massachusetts Open Meeting Law requirements, discussions will not take place during public comment periods. If appropriate, responses to questions and concerns will be given by the town manager at a future town council meeting. Anyone may comment at this time for up to three minutes. Please state your name and address for the record.
Steph Demilia, Harvest Lane. Almost every time I've come up here, I speak about water. Last time I was here, I had some questions regarding the MBTA and I'm not sure how this is supposed to go, if I'm supposed to say through you to Mr. Davis? Or can I speak directly to him? I just wanted to say thank you very much for answering part of my questions. I really appreciate it. I'm one resident out of close to 30,000 and you taking the time to answer my question is very appreciative. I do, can I direct the question back to him through here?
Yeah, he just won't be able to answer tonight, but we could take that.
I did hear you say we paid $157,000 this year to the MBTA for hosting a T-stop. Did I hear that correctly? Because it's hard to hear back there. I don't, that was the number, 157? Okay, so I heard that, right? And we've been paying since 2002? Did I, or 2012? I didn't hear, I couldn't hear. Was it 2002?
2002.
2002? Okay, and then the T-stop was active in the 90s? Does that sound right? I'm asking, I don't know. Mid 90s, I believe it was? Yeah, so the reason why I ask the question is because, again, it could be hearsay, but I'm pretty confident that the information I gathered, back then, we had a select board or selectman and there was a gentleman by the name of Mr. Caniper. I believe he was the chairman. And he negotiated where the T-stop was going to go, if we were going to have one in Bridgewater. I know the MBTA wanted one. And again, please fact-check me, because this is what I've learned over the past year or so. The negotiation was, they wanted a stop in Bridgewater. And we agreed to having one, but Mr. Caniper worked diligently with the college, back then college, not university, to agree to hosting it on their property, which is state property, it's not town property. In return, we would forever not pay the fee. That was the negotiation. The MBTA agreed and came back with, okay, you need to supply us with overflow parking. So the select board worked diligently and came up with the plan of the property from, across from Berg King, on the other side of the tracks, all the way up through Plymouth Street and all the parking behind the Polish Club and all through there. However, it was contaminated and still is to this day. I don't care what anyone says. It's contaminated, there's monitoring wells there, I can show them to you, you can look at them yourself. But anyway, the state came back and said, we'll take it and we'll cap it and we'll monitor it, because it was a legal way of doing it back then. So the parking area is overflow for the MBTA, for the citizens of Bridgewater used, but it gets used by college students as well. And that was the give and take going back and forth. That is my understanding. We are not supposed to be paying for the T-stop in Bridgewater, because it's housed on state property and that was the deal that was made back in the mid 90s. In return, we gave them the parking spaces that are off-campus and they capped it over contaminated soil. So that's my understanding. I don't know how accurate it is, but I will tell you this. I don't know how accurate it is, but I will tell you this. Mr. Caniper is still alive. I had a great conversation with him. He's willing to speak to whomever. I have his contact information. He's getting a little older now. I didn't want to ask him to come to a meeting and sit here for two hours. So if you do your homework, just know that Mr. Caniper is willing to talk, and I can try to facilitate that. Was that my three-minute timer?
Yeah. Can somebody give me their three minutes if they're not speaking? Well, take another 30 seconds.
I just wanted to talk about the water. Last time here, Mr. Perry, thank you for giving me this. I didn't find a lot of the information that I was looking for. Like, so we have two wells, 10A and 10B. I don't know if, in this report, it says 10B has elevated manganese levels, that's quoted in there. And I was curious to know if the levels are within the guidelines of the DEP when they're elevated. Not sure, that's getting pumped back into our water system. Another thing is Flag Street is done, the one-mile distance that was repaired with all our underground and brand-new beautiful paving. In this report, it says there was a certain amount of money for the new water main. Does anybody know if that was done? Anybody check to make sure we got the new water main in that section of brand-new roadway? Because there's a lot of money that was allocated for that, but I don't know if anybody's checking on that. We're still in a water ban, from my understanding. I did ask recently, right now we are in a water ban. And I'm just curious, because we're four months away from spring, and that's when we, years and years and years ago, when I was a kid, that's when our water ban started. And then they would come off by end of summer. And as I got older and been part of this town, the water bans were getting longer and longer. And now we're into the winter months, or late fall, whatever it is, and we're still in a water ban. So come spring, I believe we're going to get that big push of water usage, and I don't think we have the wells. When we say infrastructure, it's all of it, but the wells are not designed to push the water that we're permitted for. The 1.55 million, or whatever the number was, 1.52, we're blowing out at the seams. That's my understanding. So even though we're permitted for 1.98 million gallons per day, we don't have the ability to push that kind of water. That's why we're sucking from the bottom now. The wells don't have a chance to rest. That's why we're in a water ban. Please correct me if I'm wrong. And lastly, there's a couple other things. One thing, we didn't talk about iron, manganese, and PFEST, again, tonight, that one. No talk of it. And I'll leave it with this. I know we have a water supply box down at the town barn. Has that water been tested? Does anybody know if that water gets tested and the quality of it? Is there a report on that that the townspeople can look at? I know it's supposedly filtered water, and I'm appreciative of it and glad it is filtered, but I think, you know, to ease people's mind, you know, maybe we can get a report making sure that it is tested. And there are some elderly people that can't make it down there, so maybe we can come up with some kind of a delivery of water for some of the elderly people in this town. Thank you for the time, thank you for the extra time, and thank you again, Mr. Davis, for answering my questions.
Thank you.
Brad McKinnon, Spring Street. You know, it was a lot easier on that side when you forgot something, you could just raise your hand. But then again, I was calling myself a dirt dummy, so of course, I'm going to forget something, you know? It has something to do with the water, too, and the sewer. When I was here, there was a lot of talks of us using the prison's water treatment facility and tying in BSU and a lot of other side of town over there. Haven't heard any of those talks. We've had two water presentations since I've been gone, and that hasn't been brought up once. And I mean, when we were doing Phase 1 on, I forget the street, but just a sewer plant, that was supposed to be done last December. Who knows if that's finished? I know Phase 2, you guys did something recently, some resolution ordinance, but is the prison's water treatment facility, have they even done Phase 1? Because, I mean, 25% of this town is state-owned, and the rules, rules for thee but not for me, kind of gets old really quick. There's that, and then, sorry, I'm losing my thought. Oh, another, this one might sound a little crazy, but, you know, when the MBTA community acts, when we first voted for that, yes, I did vote for it, but I also spoke against it a few different ways, and especially how I was the one that knocked off the levels of floors by a whole floor. We're in renegotiations, or whatever we want to call them, to be compliant again. Maybe we look into seeing if the state can be a little lenient when it comes to Phase 2 over at the sewer plant. I mean, I know it was $66 million or something like that when I was here, so it's probably more. But the fact that if it's not all done by 2030, they can come after, I forget what the exact penalties were, but there were some penalties if everything wasn't completed by 2030. So maybe we can look into using that as bargaining chip to get us a year or two extra, because, I mean, the water infrastructure, Vernon Street, the last reports, I think was 38 million? I mean, seven and a half just to tie 10B and 10A into High Street. I mean, Phase 2, I do not see at the sewer plant being anywhere near as important as these water issues we have in town. And I know that might sound silly, it might sound like a ball hit out of a foul ball, but I always tell people, even like Steph just said, we pay for a train, which basically gets covered by the prison, all right? And then we have the college. I appreciate the college, but the prison, I mean, I'm not a big fan of that. We're kind of a three-strike town, and in baseball, we're out when it comes to the state. They don't help. I mean, Janet Hansen's great, but $3 million and $200,000 is all we got for a year worth of grants. They didn't really help us at all, being compliant. So that's just my words. And I hope you guys have a great Thanksgiving and holiday season, in case I don't see you. Thank you.
Anyone else to come and speak? MJ?
Mr. President, members of the council, residents and tenants, good evening. MJ Spigot, 5 Lake Shore Center, Unit 1128. As you are aware, the Finance Committee met last night and voted on several items. Wanted to let you know, we are still looking for one more member. We're looking for our ninth member to join the Finance Committee. It is a town clerk appointment, so I just want to throw it out there. I did, in my, in my meeting with my colleagues last night, also make that mention, but I would also, in this forum, make it known that we still need a ninth member to give our roster a full fill-out, and I would greatly appreciate if a resident or residents were interested in stepping up to the plate to offer their candidacy. You may do so by sending your information to the town clerk. Since it is her appointment, she would be the one making that decision. I would encourage anybody of any financial background or no financial background to, you know, if you have an interest in being a volunteer, please step up to the plate. We'd welcome you with open arms. So with that, Mr. President, that's all I had for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. And would anyone else to come and speak? Okay. Thank you all very much. We will now move into council comments. Counselor Lindy.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to note that we saw some nice lights on the common tonight, and I know WinterWonderful is either close to their goal, but they, Counselor Hunt will back me up on this. Usually you try to raise some money, even if you're at goal, for the following year, so you can guarantee that that's going to happen. They're selling ornaments for Christmas, so Lisa Bazzell-Curley and Jeff Fowler and Keith Buell are all doing that. So, I mean, I appreciate that, being there. I also wanted a call to everybody's attention. I just happened to be going through the Enterprise newspaper, which is really hard to get in this town, because both our public library and Bridgewater State don't have it, because they can't get it delivered properly to either location. So I got to go over to East Bridgewater and read it at the library. I'm not going to buy it, because there's nothing in it. But there was a nice article today that's "Community generosity shines in Bridgewater's library's donation drive." So Beth McDermott wrote the article. "The Bridgewater Public Library collected more than 1,900 toiletry items for Walt's mobile closet. The donations will support neighbors in need according to a community announcement." So they're doing that, they're doing a food drive, there's doing all sorts of stuff going on over at our library, and we should be proud of the staff and the community that actually uses the library, that comes in and donates that stuff. I see it growing every day, and they're all, the staff and the trustees and the library friends are going to put on a Cookies, Coffee &amp; Cocoa event. I don't have the date yet, but look for it on the library website. And they're going to be doing like a book sale, like, you know, Black Friday stuff, but the first two weeks in December, my time is up, the first two weeks, the first two weeks, the first two weeks in December, they're going to sell bags of books for $5, and, you know, so, because basically they clear it out so they can collect more. The people of this town are very generous with books. There's books there you can get, if you want to wait, instead of buying a $30 book, you can wait three months and have the book for a buck. And there's lots of kids' books there, too. So just wanted a kudos to the library and the library staff. Thanks.
Thank you. Counselor Hunt?
I don't have a lot to say, but I did want to say that I was really grateful for the people who applied for the school committee position. I thought all of them had great resumes, and I was just really pleased that they put themselves up for that, and I think we made a good decision. So that's it.
Thank you. Counselor Murphy?
Yeah, I just want to echo this statement about the folks that applied to the school committee. All four were great candidates, so I appreciated them putting themselves out there and applying for that role to help our town. I also wanted to highlight, and I mentioned it quickly, that Desi is doing a study on local contributions for Chapter 70. They're holding public listening sessions throughout the state, and tomorrow evening in Lakeville at the high school, 4:30 to 6:30 PM, they'll be present. I know myself and Counselor Ready plan on attending. For those of you that can't attend, they're also accepting written testimony, and so I would encourage all my fellow counselors, if you can't attend, to at least submit written testimony, and members of the public as well, too. I think that's very important for them to hear about that piece. In addition to that, staying with the schools, this Friday, we, I know a few of our counselors have been invited, well, actually, all of the council have been invited, a few of us will be attending a tour of some of the schools in Bridgewater, so we can see what it's like on a day-to-day basis. I think that's really important for us to have that in mind as budget season approaches. I know we've talked about the questions and how we can improve that and give some recognition to the schools and our teachers and our students and what their experience is on a day-to-day basis. So I'm excited to be attending that this Friday. A little nervous about going back to elementary school for me, but that's besides the point. Also, next weekend, I'm presenting a citation which went around, and my fellow counselors signed to Black Hat Brewery. They're celebrating their 10 years in Bridgewater. They've been a great partner for this town, they've given a lot back. So to Paul and that staff over there, excited to present that citation. I'm doing it in recognition with some of our state leaders as well, too. So just a huge shout-out to them for making it 10 years and all they've done for our town here, too. And then a happy Thanksgiving to everybody, because I know we won't see everybody between now and the holiday, but happy Thanksgiving to my fellow counselors, public, and to everybody's family as well, too.
Thank you. Dr. Perry?
Thank you. Again, echoing the sentiments that were made earlier, I want to thank those that put the names in for the spot on the school committee. I can say, it takes as many volunteers as possible to run these towns and to be involved in all these different committees that are necessary to help this town function, so I appreciate those that came on out. And again, I think a good choice was made. I want to give a shout-out to the Bridgewater Food Pantry. My office last week did a yearly food drive that we do every year, but they are at, you know, a very high need right now. They're getting a lot of people coming, looking for help and support this year especially. So if anyone can donate to the Bridgewater Food Pantry, which is located at Central Square Congregational Church down in their basement, I would encourage people to see if they can contribute this year. Couple of congratulations, I do know, and I've just been hearing recently, that our local Badgers teams are wrapping up a season, and many of the teams went and went to the Super Bowl. I think we got three champions, Mr. Demilia? All right, Coach Demilia should tell you, say. So I want to congratulate all those Badgers teams for their success and congratulate those Super Bowl champs. I also want to congratulate our current Bridgewater-Ranham Trojans football team. They're in the midst of a semifinal matchup coming up this Friday at Mansfield High at 6 o'clock, taking on Bishop Fian for a chance to go to a Super Bowl as well. So I encourage, as many people who like to follow town football, to go out there and support the team, because they're going to need your support. They're going to have a tough matchup against those guys. I also just want to mention, we did have a good turnout at the Tri-Town Veterans Day Parade. It was, you know, 37 degrees, we had to have the coldest day of the year since last winter to have a parade, but a lot of people came out for it, and it was well-attended. And I want to thank those that were able to come out for it, and obviously, thank all of our veterans for their service and sacrifice. And then, as mentioned, you know, the lights are being started to put on the common, I think more are coming, but the Lions Cup will be out there right after Thanksgiving, put up the decorations as well. We meet Saturday morning after Thanksgiving, and we'll also, you know, we'll always take a few volunteers that want to come on out and help put the decorations up. A lot of hands make for short work. So we'll be out there, we're picking up the decorations about 8, so we'll probably be on the common around 9-ish or so, if anyone wants to come out and help us out. And then Christmas on the common, obviously, being put on by the Bridgewater Business Association that first Sunday of December. So come on out and support that as well. And as we said, Thanksgiving's coming up, so I wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving. Thank you. That's all I got.
Thank you. And Counselor Strickles?
Thank you very much. Thank you to everyone who continues to attend our meetings and will in the future. It does make our town stronger. We hear what you're saying, we want your concerns addressed, so the more you voice them in this public forum, the better. I would like to echo the sentiments of Dr. Perry about the food pantry, and I would encourage everyone, if you can make monetary donations, those will go a lot further than actual non-perishables, because they can buy in a bulk capacity. And even $20 goes a lot further than one small bag from Roach Brothers. So definitely give to the Bridgewater Food Pantry, or any food pantry, or any food-related cause that you can, because everyone needs a meal three times a day, especially around Thanksgiving. I'd also like to congratulate the BR Trojans varsity football team for making the Division II Final Four and for their ESPN shout-out. I watch ESPN Countdown every single Sunday, and it was very, very fun to see our hometown team get a You Got Most, especially from Randy Moss. I hope that they just play that on a loop constantly, because that would have just been the best when I was in high school. It was amazing to see it live, and I do want to just say happy Thanksgiving to everyone. I want to wish them luck. They have some really special things going on, a female kicker, which I just think is fantastic, and I want them to have a happy Thanksgiving. I want everyone around me to have a happy Thanksgiving. Please stay safe, well, and well-fed. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Ellenberg?
Yes, I want to thank our town manager for really getting on top of our budget issues. Kudos to you. Kudos to the citizens who come out and express your concerns. I also want to compliment those who volunteered for the school committee position, and thank you for everyone who volunteers. I wanted to bring to people's attention the Natural Resources Trust of Bridgewater, and I attended a Zoom meeting of theirs last night. And the Natural Resources Trust of Bridgewater promotes preservation and appropriate use of open space and natural resource conservation. The three Bridwaters are working together to make a woodland hiking experience that goes from one town to another, and this is called Bridging the Bridgewater Stewards. So they're trying to unify the existing trails into one long thing. They are moving into Phase 4, which is constructing the trail, and they will be starting in the spring, and the, and it was noted that they need volunteers to lay down the trail. There's going to be trails in some places where it's just, you know, on dirt, other places, planks of wood that have to be constructed. So keep an eye out for the spring when the trail is going to be laid down, and anyone who wants to step forward, who's handy with tools, carpentry, you would be very welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. And Counselor Kennedy?
Yep, I just want to thank the citizens for coming out and voicing their concerns, and thank you to the candidates as well that stepped up to try to get on the school committee. I know that's a difficult thing to get up there and speak in front of everybody, especially being publicly interviewed like that, but I appreciate their efforts. Thank you to my fellow councillors, again, for another productive meeting. I plan on being there as well in Lakeville tomorrow, so really, if anyone, if you care about the school system and the budget and the lack of support from our state government when it comes to our schools, please try to attend the meeting in Lakeville. I will post more information online about it, on our Facebook accounts, and it is floating around out there, but please go out there and say something, because they need to be supporting appropriately the school systems across the state, and we're not getting that support. And my last thing is, happy Thanksgiving, everyone. Hope everyone enjoys their holiday.
Thank you. Vice President McGrath.
Thank you, Mr. President. The seniors center is having a pie drive. They're collecting 100 pies for the Bridgewater seniors for Thanksgiving. You can cook them, or have them ready to bake, or stew, buy them in the store. So the drop-off is November 17th to the 21st, and November 24th. It's during the time that the seniors are open, Monday through Thursday, 9:03, and Friday, 9:00 to 12:00 PM. And everyone have a happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you. Congratulations again to Mr. Sleenus. I was there a year ago, and I was on the other side of it when I got appointed, and you all interviewed better than I did, so you guys did, you guys did great. So with that being said, on the school side, again, it's been mentioned already, the DESI hearing is tomorrow in Lakeville. I will be there. Sounds like I'll be there with my fellow councillors. I'm looking forward to testifying with you all, because we do need to advocate for ourselves at the state level in order to properly fund our schools, and also look at everything that we could do here at home. But it starts at the top, and we need to go out there and advocate for our, for our children. And that's all that I have, if it's been said, but happy Thanksgiving, everybody, and we'll see you all in a few weeks. With that being said, the public is done, but we have executive session. I'll entertain a motion to move into executive session under Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21a3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining. If an open meeting may have detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body, and the chair so declares. Bridgewater Firefighters Union, Local 2611, Bridgewater Police Association, and United Steelworkers, Local 9517, Unit 04, and to adjourn from executive session. We do need a roll call for that. We have a motion and a second, and a roll call, please.
Mr. Kennedy?
Yes.
Ms. Ellenberg?
Yes.
Ms. Striggles?
Yes.
Ms. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Lorette?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy?
Hello.
Ms. Hunt?
Yes.
And Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Eight in favor, one opposed.
I am.
Nick in the mud.
I think I'm...